Welcome, everybody, to the March 19th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and electronic communication devices. Agenda and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. And as I said, you can turn them over to Geraldine, to your left. At this time, I'd like to do the moment of silence of reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Travis Laster.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Laster. Next on our agenda is a review and approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Taken.
Moved by Hadcock, seconded by Laster. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next on our agenda is item five, is Executive Proclamation to Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. I'll read this into the record and then I will turn it over to Mr. Laster for comments. So proclamation reads, "From Pendleton County, South Dakota, Welcome Home Veterans Day." Whereas Vietnam was fought in Vietnam, excuse me, whereas the Vietnam War was fought in Vietnam from 1961 to 1975, and involved in North Vietnam, and the Vi con to conflict with the United States Armed Forces in South Vietnam, and whereas the United States became involved in Vietnam because of policymakers in the United States believing that in South Vietnam fell to the communist government and the commission communism would spread throughout the rest of Southeast Asia, and whereas members of the United States Armed Forces began serving in an advisory role in South Vietnam in 1961. And whereas, as a result of the Gulf Duncan Incident on August 2nd, 1964, and August 4th, 1964, Congress overwhelmingly passed the Gulf of Duncan Resolution on August 7th, 1964, which effectively handed over war making powers to President Johnson until such time as peace, security had returned to the Vietnam. And whereas in 1965, United States Armed Forces ground combat units arrived in Vietnam, and whereas by the end of 1965, there were 80,000 United States troops in Vietnam, and by 1969, a peak of approximately 540,000 troops was reached. And whereas January 27, 1973, the Treaty of Paris was signed, which required the release of the United States prisoners of war held in Vietnam and the withdrawal of the United States Armed Forces from South Vietnam. Whereas March 29th, 1973, United States Armed Forces completed the withdrawal of the combat troops from Vietnam, and whereas more than 58,000 members of the United States Armed Forces lost their lives in Vietnam, and more than 300,000 members of the Armed Forces were wounded. And whereas members of the United States Armed Forces who served bravely and faithfully for the United States during the Vietnam War were caught up in their return home in crossfire of public debate about the involvement of the United States in Vietnam War. And whereas it was also first time in history, America failed to welcome its, welcome back its heroes. Whereas the establishment of the Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day would be an appropriate way to honor those members of the United States Armed Forces who served in Vietnam during the Vietnam War. And now therefore will be resolved, the Pendleton County Commissioners do hereby recognize March 29th, 2024 as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. Thank you, Mr. Laster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I see many veterans out here that I know, many of y'all already know that I'm a veteran. My father served over in Saigon. So those who were around during that time or know anybody who speaks, talks about it know the welcome home that our soldiers and sailors received after Vietnam was not that welcome home. So this is a good thing for us. We should always recognize our veterans, welcome them home when they come back from a conflict, because quite frankly, it's our government that gets us into some of these conflicts. It's just the soldiers, the sailors, the veterans who are, we're doing our part in it, we're trying to do our part of it, we may or may not agree with it. And I think this is just a good way to remind the public that we should always welcome our veterans home, even though there might be a conflict that we're not necessarily in agreeance with. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Laster. Ms. Hadcock.
I also like to think Senator Rounds, I think I was calling him Governor Rounds. So Senator Rounds did a proclamation as well for our veterans and pinned a lot of our veterans on a day that I went to see a lot of the veterans, and there was only over 200 Vietnam veterans that showed up for that pinning, and it was amazing to watch the pride that came out of their faces, just being recognized that day. So anything we can do in agreement with this proclamation to welcome home our veterans, and also to the men and women that have served us in our country and made us free and gave their lives for us today. So this proclamation is for all our veterans, including the Vietnam veterans that served us well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hadcock. Any further comments? Mr. Roskinet.
I'll just go ahead and make the motion. Move to approve the Chair's signature on the Executive Proclamation declaring March 29th, 2024 as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day.
Taken.
Moved by Roskinet, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Please take a moment to rise and to appreciate our veterans. Next, that brings us up to the consent agenda, and I'll recognize.
Good morning, Commissioners, Joan Martin, Commission Coordinator.
I just had other stuff. Sorry, Joan.
I'm with Lloyd. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda contains the following items. Minutes from the regular meeting of March 5th, 2024. To acknowledge the filing of petitions as an application for incorporation of the proposed Pactola Estates Road District by the voters within the proposed road district. To acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle by the Pennington County Republican Party. To appoint Commissioner Deb Hadcock to the Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment Commission for a term of five years. To appoint Ms. Patricia Myers, Ms. Terry Phelps, and Mr. Larry Beasley to the Pennington County Board of Mental Illness for a term commencing March 19th, 2024, and ending September 1st, 2024. And finally, to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of February 2024.
Okay. At this time, is there any members from the public who would like to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, any Commissioners wish to remove any items from the consent agenda?
Number 10.
Number 10.
Okay. Number 10 or number 9?
10.
My papers have 9. Do I have the wrong one?
10 is the.
To appoint to the Board of Mental Illness.
Mental Health.
Yes. Okay, yeah, my agenda says 10, but all of them except for item number 10.
No move.
Taken.
It's been moved to approve 6, 7, 8, 9, and 11. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. On this item, I'm assuming you want to abstain?
Number 10 is the, it's not number 9.
Oh, Patricia.
I can vote on number 9.
Okay, so I wasn't wrong, okay.
Yeah, and I can vote on number 9.
Okay. Item number 10, Ms. Hadcock.
This is on the Mental Illness. Greg Barnier is in charge of this group, and really good man, and I thought maybe he could come say a few words about the people that are getting appointed and about what he does for Pennington County. He is the chairman of this board. Thank you, Greg.
Good morning, Commissioners. I think I'll thank you, but I'm not quite sure yet, Ms. Hadcock. The three that are under consideration here, it's, the details of the request is they are currently serving on the board, and they have, despite efforts by commission staff, there's been a difficulty in obtaining new qualified applicants to serve on the board. And so because of that difficulty, we're asking, or I'm asking on behalf of the Mental Illness Board, that these three individuals have their appointment extended for this period of time. And this simply will help us continue to function as required by law, to provide that service for county residents and for those who find themselves here in the county when they have that situation. So I'd be glad to respond to questions, but beyond that, I think it's pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Mr. Drews.
So this is a very important board to the county. We appreciate those that have served on it and are willing to continue during this period of time in which we're soliciting additional volunteers to step forward and make application to serve on this board. I know that Nicole Keenan is stepping off the board, but appreciate her service also, and it takes individuals like that and like the ones that we're reappointing to step forward and be able to commit the time to serve on the Mental Illness Board. So I would encourage anybody that has an interest in that area at all to look at the application and to consider applying for this type of position. Thank you.
Thank you. I too will make that point also. That's a very important process through mental health holds and so forth, and so it's a process that needs to be followed, and it's a fair process for our community and the people that need it. So with that, is there any further discussions? Seeing Mr. Drews.
Make a motion to approve number 10.
Taken.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Chair, going to privilege?
Yes.
Number 9, I did not abstain because I cannot receive any kind of funds or have any kind of housing in my motels or otherwise, so I have no financial interest in that. I'm just being appointed to a board.
Okay, thank you. It was highlighted, so I, so. Item number 12, presentation of the Adopt a Highway Program Certificates for Appreciation. Ms. Ginny Merrill.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're here this morning to recognize our Adopt a Highway volunteers and the hard work that they do in keeping our roadways clean. In 2023, we had 52 organizations participate in the program, and they cleared 116.27 miles of county roads. All 52 groups were invited to attend this meeting, but we have 18 groups here today who will receive their certificates, and the others will be sent out in the mail. We also presently have eight sections of roads that are open for adoption. The roads available are on our website, and if a group or organization would be interested in adopting, they can look at the interactive map on the available roads or contact our office. And we surely appreciate all the groups who are here today, and we can start with our presentation.
Thank you.
You ready?
Joe Miller with the Highway Department is very appreciative of the help also.
Yes, it wouldn't be possible to keep our roads as clean as they are without these guys. They're a very big part of our department, you know, without them, it would take manpower from our guys to keep these ditches as clean as they are. You know, we have 330 miles of asphalt, so there's still about 200 miles out there that aren't adopted, so if anybody's interested.
Thank you. Okay, here we go. So if I read your name, your organization, surely come on up. The 28th Munition Squadron from Ellsworth Air Force Base. The 28th MXS of Ellsworth Air Force Base. The 28th Bomber Wing Weapons Organization. 28th Logistics Readiness Squadron.
Just for a heads up, when, after you get your certificate, please stick around up here so we can take a picture.
Okay, Black Hills Clean Water Alliance.
Thank you.
Black Hills Energy. The Cosmopolitan Club. Hard Rocker Cheer. The Hargans Family. Now, this is a long one. Materials Advantage, South Dakota School of Mines and Technology, metallurgical engineering.
I believe it's an engineer school to come up with that. You need an acronym.
Several of these organizations are actually new in the last year or so, so that's exciting. Audio Equipment. South Dakota Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 2. South Dakota School of Mines and Technologies, American Indian Science and Engineering Society, Chapter. South Dakota School of Mines and Technology, student members of the American Chemical Society. South Dakota School of Mines and Technology Weather Association. Silver City Fire Department. Spring Creek Kids. This is a very interesting story. Brian Barber is here, who is here with them today. And last year, I know at least once, they all got together on a Saturday. I'm sure there's more of them, I know there's more of them. They all got together on a Saturday and had a pizza party and picked up a whole trailer, a horse trailer full of trash.
You're almost our size, Joe.
It was pretty darn exciting to see pictures of that.
Let's see, Western Dakota Insurers. And if there's anybody else that I forgot, that I missed, that's here to be recognized. Anybody? Okay.
All right, can we get the whole group that's here for Adopt a Highway up here for a picture? Were you all of them here, or?
I think.
Thank you.
Back here would be good.
Thank you.
Up here, guys.
Don't be shy, come on up. They don't mind.
Pick your Commissioner.
Most people.
Where'd you guys get the names?
Mine, Joey. Um, that's the one that we have been on.
Oh, what part?
Uh, Lower Spring.
Need them to scoot in a little bit?
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I'd just like to say, take a second to thank Ginny Merrill for all she does to coordinate this program. Without her help, it wouldn't be possible, so. She has a lot to coordinate with all these agencies to get, we supply vests and trash bags and all the necessary equipment to go out along the roads and be safe and pick up the trash along these sections of highway, so definitely appreciate her help in coordinating the efforts of these fine volunteers keeping our roadways clean, so.
Thanks, Ginny.
And then the other thing, if you're interested in adopting a section, you can go to our Pennington County website and go down to Departments and click on Highway, and there's a section on there, so. Or call Ginny.
Thank you, folks. Well, thank you. Next, that brings us up to item 13, which is Executive Session. And this is going to be for contractual matters, SDC 125-2, number 3. No motions will be made after this. We'll have, bring up the item on number 15, because this is the Agreement for Operations for Use of Fairgrounds, Property, and Buildings. So with that being said.
No move.
Moved to go into Executive Session.
Seconded.
Seconded by Roskinet.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Sure.
If we go into Executive Session and have a discussion about this, we're doing it without having public input. I do know there's a lot of input, public out here that's here for this particular topic. Are we just going to go and have a conversation about what was presented, and then we'll have a conversation with the public on item 15? Because I think they have a lot that they want to put in, and I want to make sure the public understands where we're sitting in this.
Yes, under item 15, that's why, you know, we go into Executive Session, talk about the contractual, is there any changes that, we come back with two items, and they can make those changes and bring it back under item 15.
But we're going to make changes without public input?
That's a good point. We could take the public comment before we go in.
I mean, I think that would be more appropriate if we're going to make changes to the contract.
Chair.
So we do have a motion in Florida to go into Executive Session and seconded for discussion. Does the board want to take a public comment first? I'm checking with the motion makers first.
I'll withdraw my motion.
You'll withdraw your motion? Okay. Seconders, okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Hadcock.
So I'm trying to figure out, is this being online with the whole thing, I mean, with the changes? Has it? So why would you go into Executive Session if it's been online already? It's not contractual at this point, it's just discussion.
It is discussion, and it belongs in Executive Session.
Oh, I guess I disagree, but, okay.
Okay. Do we have speaker request forms? First, I have Jay Schmidt.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jay Schmidt, for full transparency and founding member of South Valley Civic Organization, but I'm here to represent only myself on this. Want to talk about, I'm here to address several concerning incidents that's occurred under all of your guys' leadership and commission. Mr. La Croix, it's come to my attention that you've denied the existence of the Lloyd La Croix gun ban, despite the fact that the ban was implemented last year. There's no question about that, it was done. You were aware of the Fair Board's decision to install metal detectors, and you didn't intervene, leading to further disconnect among citizens. You further delayed Commissioner Lassiter's attempts to bring it up for public discussion for months. I'm one of them that comes to the meetings frequently. I know he's brought it up several times, and you just kept kicking the can down the road. You did not want to address this. Furthermore, the decision to infringe upon First Amendment rights of, I know two Native American children at the fair last year, enforcing them to turn their shirts inside out, is deeply troubling. As someone who has spent a significant portion of my life on the reservation, and I'm married to a tribal member, I understand the importance of upholding everyone's constitutional rights and their ability to express their beliefs. Moreover, it has become apparent that your commitment to your role as the Chair is questionable as evidenced by your pursuit of reelection while seemingly neglecting your duties. You failed to recognize conflicts of interest that you've had until other Commissioners have brought it up. In light of these issues, I am going to file code of conduct violation on you with State's Attorney's Office for Article 3, Number F. Whereas you responded to that flyer as the Chair of the Commission, you did not have a board meeting and get approval from everyone on the board to address that. You also used county time, county staff, and the county email to address this flyer that was sent out when it wasn't directed at the Commission, it was only directed at you and your reelection. So I just wanted to give you a heads up, I don't believe in doing things behind your back, I'm here to look at you face to face and let you know that's what I'm doing. And to allow this contract and to allow the Fair Board to ban any type of firearms when we have the crime that we have right now, it's just not feasible, it's not right. I appreciate your guys' time, thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Since you seem to focus on me, I do have the opportunity to respond.
Sure.
I did not approve the metal detectors at the fair last year, last year. That was the Fair Board that had done that, and we had Commissioners on that Fair Board, so they were aware of it. I wasn't aware of it until I got to the fair. So that's number one. And number two, responding to a letter that's false that was sent out to, over abundance, well, the majority of the Commission, is right to do, because quite frankly, it's an outside group trying to influence the vote on this board. And I did contact people. So, yes, my. So, yes, my letterhead was from me, and then the email come from you with the press release to try to right the wrong, that somebody was trying to influence the vote on this commission. And as far as working on, uh, what we've been working on, I was, did my due diligence, we wanted to do it right, and I passed that on. Both those items are on this agenda for today. So that's, that's my response. Mr. Roskinet.
I don't put a lot of weight on canned testimony, sir.
On what?
Canned testimony, you know, you got to come up and read it instead of coming from your heart. But the, the phone calls that I got relative to the bright orange cards, they gave me the opportunity, they really let those folks know what's going on in the county and our position, so whoever sent those, in a way it was a blessing, because I actually, once these people understood what was really going on, I don't know that they're real happy with the, uh, whoever sent the cards or the group behind them, so, uh, that's my two bits worth today on your flyers.
I had nothing to do with.
I'm not saying you did.
I, I, nothing. And, and to let you know, I write my stuff out like that and read it to you, it does come from my heart, and I write it so I don't go off on a tangent and sit here for thirty minutes repeating myself. I wanted to be short and to the point, and that's why I did what I did.
Well, I appreciate you coming in front of the commission today.
Chair.
Ms. Haggard.
Number one, he has a condition, so he has to write things out, a medical condition that he has told me about, so I think that was uncalled for. Um, number two, um, that wouldn't have been a problem to send that flyer out, which they did, but the issue is, you already filed your petition. When you filed your petition and put your name on it, and it says, "From Pennington County, Lloyd La Croix, District Two, and signed," Pennington, or it says, "Thank you Commissioner Lloyd La Croix, from the press," that has nothing to do with commission. When somebody sends a flyer out, whether it sends it in five different districts, it doesn't matter. Once you filed your petition and your name's on it, I understand what he's saying. In fact, he called me on it. So, I disagree, and we knew the ban was there and you went through a ban, we all did. I made a mistake, I voted for the thing when they first did it, but then complications through the whole thing with the First Amendment, Second Amendment right, people knew about it, Lassiter was telling everybody about it, nobody did anything, you were our chairman. So I agree with, uh, what he's saying, I also believed you used your position as a commissioner to file on that, uh, because of that, and just because it went to three or four districts, doesn't matter. I also sent you a text accordingly to say that you are running, you filed your petition, you should not voice your opinion on it, so that's my point of view.
Those were after the fact, but anyhow.
Those were not after the fact, you already filed.
Excuse me, I have the floor. That's my stance on, on that, is I believe those flyers were a way to try and influence the vote of this commission. That's why I responded as I did.
I don't think the flyers said anything about the commission, it was directed towards you specifically, if I remember correctly. But if I'm wrong, let me know, but I don't think it said anything other than.
Has our individual names on it too. Yes.
You and Gary.
Sent to you?
Sent to me.
Right.
And delivered to my door.
But on the other side, does it say anything about you?
Yep, it does.
What's it say?
It says that I haven't made up my mind.
What's that?
Says I haven't made up my mind.
But it doesn't say anything about you having anything to do with it, correct?
Right.
Says, "Is County Commissioner Gary Drews supporting a gun ban?"
Is he? It says?
It says, "Is County Commissioner Gary Drews supporting a gun ban?"
What's the rest say?
And on the backside, it says, "Call and leave a message for Commissioner Drews, no gun bans in Pennington County." There's never been a gun ban that's been talked about at this commission, as far as I know. Exactly.
You, you do know, you know that what happened last year was going on, and you knew it was going to happen, because I had talked to Travis, I talked to Deb, I talked.
I don't, I don't sit on, I don't sit on the Fair Board. Travis sits on the Fair Board, I believe, or Deb did last year.
Point of order, we've been talking about.
Didn't have anything to do with some of us.
No, I have point of order. Point of order.
What's your point of order?
My point of order is, everybody has been talking about this over years, so you're made false statements saying you knew nothing about it. It says, "Being proposed nor has been discussion of one in the past, false and misleading information." You put that on your flyer, you put this on the press, we've been talking about this over a year.
Okay, you took the floor, your point of order was out of order.
No, it's not out of order, it's truth.
I'm done.
I think, yes, we're, go on to the next speaker, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I'm Ray Luntzberger. In spite of the statements of support for the Second Amendment and all the denials and assurances about not even considering banning guns, here we have in the proposed language for this contract, a new section which claims to give the county commission power to authorize that very thing. Under the heading conditions, Section 3H begins with good reflection of current state law, "Lisi shall not ban the lawful carrying of weapons on the least premises." However, that statement is nullified and swallowed up by the following three exceptions. The first appears to be based on the law, but goes beyond what the law allows. The second is entirely unnecessary, since nothing in state or federal law requires banning firearms on county fairgrounds. The third exception, however, totally negates the lawful statement which begins Section 3H and is obviously contrary to state law. The county commission simply has no authority to grant even a temporary deviation from the requirements of the law. As a subdivision of state government, the county commission has only those rights, privileges and immunities which are granted to them by state law. And that law explicitly prohibits them from enforcing firearm regulations more stringently than the law requires. It has been famously stated that although the law prohibits counties from regulating firearms by ordinance, it says nothing about entering into a contract. That statement is the equivalent to saying, "I can't murder someone, but, but there's nothing to prevent me from contracting with someone else to do it for me." The very idea is preposterous. The meaning and intent of SDCL seven eighteen thirty-six, rather, seven, seven eighteen A thirty-six, the meaning and intent of that is clearly indicated by the title, which says, "Firearm Regulation Prohibited." It doesn't matter how you do it, it's prohibited. Subsection three sets up the mechanism for banning guns on public property in Pennington County in blatant violation of state law, whenever and wherever it might be deemed appropriate by the county commission. This is a gun ban, plain and simple, and if you vote for it, you will be voting to take away the right of the people to defend themselves, all in the name of public safety. And that might not be so easy to explain to the voters in the next election. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tina Maloney.
Good morning, commissioners, I am here in my official capacity as South Dakota State Representative District Thirty-Five, which encompasses the South Dakota State, uh, fairgrounds. I agree with the previous speaker, and I will not reiterate exactly what he stated, but I want to bring to your attention that you actually swore an oath to this, the Constitution of the United States. Where it says, in the beginning, "We, the people," that's us, the citizens, "and we hold in the Declaration of Independence, we hold the truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain and inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed." We are the governed, and we do not consent to this contract. It goes against the Constitution of the United States, it goes against the codified law of South Dakota, and it also goes against your own proclamation calling Pennington County a Second Amendment sanctuary county. I urge you, do not try to go into this contract, being able to have a Fair Board deny us our Second Amendment rights, much less even our First Amendment's rights, as they tried to last year. I urge you to double think what you're doing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tina.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Chuck Jasper, I'm here representing myself. I've written many contracts over the years, and I could go through this contract and be picky, picky, I'm not going to do that, I'm not going to waste your time and mine. I do want to make a couple of very short points. Number one, under SDCL Chapter Fifty-Nine, Agency, if you enter into this agreement, the Fair Board becomes your agents. That means everything they do, you do essentially, which means we, as the people, the citizens and voters of this state, then are responsible for any malfeasance or misfeasance, nonfeasance that they do. That's point one. Point two, if they violate someone's civil rights, and I'm not going to belabor what the previous spoke, speaker said, but apparently telling someone they have to turn their T-shirt inside out is offensive to me, and I think was offensive to the people involved as well. That's a violation of their civil rights, they have a right to speech, and wearing a T-shirt is symbolic speech, which is protected under our constitution. What are you going to ban next, or what are you going to allow the Fair Board to ban next? Flags? Much as I hate the rainbow flag, I also appreciate the MIA, PIA, PIA flag as well. But are you going to ban them and the Confederate flag because they offend somebody? That's symbolic speech, that's protected. Under the Civil Rights Law in Section Nineteen Eighty-Three, you, we, the people, can be responsible for this, for violating people's rights. If you sign this agreement, that's what you're buying us, the people, into. I disagree with that. Now, as far as the one amendment that I think was proposed that Mr. Luntzberger talked about specifically, I don't have any problem if you put up signs saying you're not supposed to have guns where alcohol is served, et cetera. I don't have a problem with that, but when you start saying the other things, you're going beyond what your authority is. County commissions, the same as municipalities, they're established by the legislature, they only have those powers delegated to you by the legislature, nothing more, nothing less. What you're doing here appears to be, you're going to give somebody else the authority to do as they please. What's the next thing you can do? Well, maybe you'll say, hm, we like more security in the county commission room, so let's hire some outside source, Black Hills Patrol is it, Patrol is an example, to be our security, and they can set up the metal detectors, and that's okay. Hogwash, that's not okay. Now, you say there's not going to be any discrimination allowed. Last year, there was discrimination allowed. If I'm carrying a concealed or unconcealed, it doesn't matter, that's my constitutional right, as well as state right. Wear a T-shirt, even if it's offensive to you individually, that's still my right, because that's symbolic speech. Now, I've looked at SDCL Sections Seven, Twenty-Seven, Three, Ten and Eleven, and I really have a question. It keeps talking about a county fair board and what the county fair board's authority is, and that is to conduct, manage and control the county fair. Does that mean they get to control the whole fairground the entire year? Because the way this contract reads, from my standpoint, that's what you're doing. I don't think that's appropriate. But the thing I find most important, you don't have a requirement for people to post bond or insurance on all these entities coming into the fair, and let's use the amusements as an example, there's been accidents all over this country in the past, and people are injured. If these companies don't have insurance, which I think should be required as a, in order for them to even set up, then we, the people, could be left holding the bag when children are injured. I think that needs to be included as well. And if acts come here and want security, let them provide their own security. But again, make them provide insurance as well. We don't want, want of their employees to go postal, if you're familiar with that term. Then further, it says you're going to cooperate with law enforcement and fire departments. Why only those two? Why not cooperate with all public agencies, or for that matter, public organizations? You know, I realize that there's an exception set aside for the four H, but I know there's other organizations that do use the fairground, but they do it under the auspices of the Fair Board and not you, and you should be the ones deciding if these particular organizations can lease the ground for a specific purpose, for a specific time. So what's next? Are you going to allow them to have people walk by a drug dog? That's another invasion of our rights against unreasonable search and seizure. And lastly, but not, but not lastly, but not the least, where's Ms. Malali's apology for what happened to her last year? She requested that, and as far as I know, it appears there's been an admission she was wronged, but she hasn't been apologized to. I'll entertain any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinet.
Mr. Jasper, the one thing I know is that you don't know my position. I almost felt like you're accusing us, uh, how we're going to vote or our minds are made up, we're here to listen, but I got that, I kind of got the, through your speech, that, uh, you already know how we're going to vote and you're trying to persuade us something different, unless I totally misinterpreted that. My next question is, why can't you carry a gun into the courthouse?
Because it's, because it's prohibited.
Okay, why?
But I can carry a gun into the Capitol.
But why is it prohibited? Why is it prohibited? Why can't you carry a gun into that courthouse? I know it's prohibited, but why?
Let me answer the question. Let me answer your que, your second question first. Under the law, I'm considered an officer of the court, and the specific law says officers of the court are permitted to carry in a courthouse. Our local judge, presiding judge, has indicated that's not appropriate, but I still think I could, technically, to answer your question. Secondly, I came here to critique or criticize, if you will, the proposed contract and what I think is wrong with it. I didn't accuse anyone of anything, other than I did say what happened last year was illegal and in violation of people's rights. Does that answer your questions?
Uh, technically, my question was, why can't the general public carry firearms into the courthouse?
Because it's prohibited, there's a specific.
You know why it's prohibited? Because of safety.
No, it's because the legislature passed a law that says they can't. You can go into why they did it and theorize all you want, I say that's what the law is, that's the answer.
Okay, we got different opinions.
Yes, we're entitled to that.
Okay, it's, it's time to move on. Thanks, Jasper.
Thank you.
Next we have Mike Miller, Mueller, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners. Actually, Miller was a proper pronunciation when I grew up in Wisconsin, so you didn't make a mistake, so, appreciate that. Um, I greatly appreciate Representative Tina Malali bringing this forward as a personal freedom item. Um, I think the language in your agreement, the three H, seems to cover it all by itself. Let's see, shall not ban the lawful carrying of weapons. Let's see, shall not ban the lawful carrying of weapons on leased premises. I don't know that there needs to be anything else with the conflicts following that, if that would be providing a subject that could reverse or oppose. Now you start going backwatering on this thing. You all saw the petition that was signed by several citizens, dozens, hundreds, or whatever it was, that if this is a violation, if this is a prohibition, it violates state law 7-18-36 mentioned by a previous speaker, Article 6, Section 2 of our South Dakota Constitution, and our Second Amendment of our U.S. Constitution. So briefly, I'd just like you to support our lawful freedoms of self-defense. And I realize that you took an oath to both those constitutions when you swore to uphold those. And as was mentioned earlier, you also declared Pennington County as a sanctuary county for Second Amendment. So one thing I don't appreciate is somebody who's standing here, and yes, they may be trying to influence your vote. That's the public's duty. Combative remarks backwards to that person are not welcome, in my view. Thank you.
Thank you. That answers speaker request forms, so I'd look for a motion to go into executive session per South Dakota CL 1-25-23 for contractual matters. And moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Roskinek. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Back into session, approved, three to two with Laster and Hancock. No. Okay, we're ready to go. I'd look for a motion to come onto executive session.
The move?
Moved by Laster.
There.
Seconded by Drews. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. This next brings us to items number 14 from the auditor. Transfer retail on off sale. Mont beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. And just as Commissioner LaCroy said, we have a transfer of a retail on off sale Mont Beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License, excuse me, from Black Elk Resort to J&amp;A Recreation.
Is there any questions for Cindy?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move approval of transfer of retail on off sale Mont Beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License from Black Hills Resort under Black Hills Elk Resort and J&amp;A Recreation LLC under Justin Beeler.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Cindy.
The next item that I have is Budget Supplement 24-001, which is to supplement the MacArthur Fund budget in the amount of $120,323.27. They didn't know exactly where they were going to be when we were working on budget last year, so they don't have any spending authority right now, so that's why we're coming forward with this.
Okay, is there any questions for Cindy? Not, I'd look for a motion. Motion to approve the Budget Supplement Resolution to SB 24-001 is presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Roskinek. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, folks, we do have, we are going to have to implement a three-minute speaking time limit because we have three, four. So I'd ask the commission to suspend the rules and put a three-minute time limit on the public comment.
The move.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Roskinek. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nope.
Motion carries with two noes from Mr. Hancock and Mr. Laster. Next, this brings us back up to the Agreement for Operations and Use of the Fairgrounds' Property and Buildings. What I'd like to do, mission's okay, is to get a motion on the floor so we know what people are talking about.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
I'd make a motion to approve the amended contract with Central State's Fair, removing Section 8, all of Section 8.
All of Section, all of it?
All of it.
Okay. There's been a motion? Is there a second?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross, or Roskinek.
So Commissioner, would you, when you say H, that would be one, two, and three as well?
So H, one, two, and three, all of it. So where it says leasing shall not ban firearms, because I believe it's, yeah, from where it says there, all the way to the end where it says the need to amend this agreement, that would be all removed.
And we got a second.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Okay, motion and seconded from Hancock. Mr. Laster.
And the reason why I did that is, as I stated before, everything went down beforehand when I was talking to the board, I believe it's all encompassed in what's already out there. Misinterpretation, unfortunately, people are going to misinterpret it, but they need to be held accountable. I think this is a way for the public to come out and do that, so I don't think we need to add any extra language that causes any, potentially causes confusion, especially after the conversation we had back there. I think as long as we follow the state and federal laws, then I think we're good, and that is addressed in the contract in Item 3F.
Okay, Mr. Roskinek, you got kind of cut off in your...
Right, I think I understand when you say Section 8, you're talking about Sub 1, 2, and 3 as well.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all good.
Chair.
Mr. Hancock.
My vote is no, I agree with the Commissioner. Laster, I made a mistake last year thinking that's safety, but I also believe that people were going to carry guns. The other half of that fairgrounds was not secured. I know from cars, trucks, everything going in there, so there needed to be something different. Again, First and Second Amendment rights are huge for me and things need to be changed. I do love the fairgrounds. I like the board. I think they do an amazing job, but I don't agree with this contract. I also believe that, how many times have we had these incidents, to change the whole contract or change the contract? They were trying to, I believe, get some agreement with the public, the general public on a gun ban, but I think what happened is it went sideways with adding more language than they needed to and to leave it as state and federal law. So again, if there was that many incidents that we needed to change it, I know it only takes one, but I think security at the fairgrounds is going to be hard unless you put a bar, border, fence all the way around it. So other than that, trying to make that fairground secure, it's never going to be secure enough for people to feel, I believe, that somebody can't carry a gun in if they wanted to. So to ban some, or not follow state and federal law and let people carry, conceal carry and, what's the other word, Travis?
Open carry?
Open carry, sorry. For me, it's part of the safety. Once you start telling people not to do something, it seems more that they will. So it's been proven over and over again. So again, because of the regulations that we had before and because there hasn't been incidents like that, there was last, not last year, the year before, other than that, I think security is going to be huge, people walking around, taking care of the situation, not putting up metal detectors anymore or banning guns at all. So all the state and federal law, I think it'll work. It has in the past.
Thank you. I'm going to give every commissioner a chance to speak before we go to the public comment. Mr. Drews, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Well, as long as I understand that, you know, the opportunity still exists if there's somebody desiring to come in of high political rank or something that wants to use the fairgrounds and that option exists of being able to deviate from this or a major entertainment, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, Mr. Roskinek, do you have anything for us?
Nope.
My only comment is I want to thank the fair board for their diligence and working hard, looking out for the safety of our community. I struggled a little bit on this. I think what they are trying to do is address all the concerns that were coming forward. You know, and some of the concerns that I had was, that you see in the contract, was number one, was the beer tents and the guns and the beer tents, and they addressed that, you know, by state law, you know, they can still post that in front of them about the state law on being intoxicated and having a firearm, so they could still do that. So that was one of my biggest concerns on this. I think the consensus of what I've heard is taking H out with all that was probably more unnecessary, was having all that was more unnecessary and I think as it sits now, I think it's good. So with that being said, that the motion on the floor is to accept their agreement with H completely moved, so I just want to clarify that, clarify that for everybody in the room. And I'll just kind of read that for you so you guys are clarified on that, if that's okay. So what they're doing on the contract is removing Item H, which is on Page 2, which says, lease shall not ban the lawful carry of weapons on leased premises. Leasing agrees to cooperate with the local law enforcement, is to develop, implement protective measures for safety and welfare of all patrons and leased premises. So they're taking that out and they're taking out Items 1, 2, and 3, which is leasing may restrict patrons from bringing firearms into any location in which prohibits entry by a person under the age 21 due to the primary source of income being the sale of alcohol beverages. Leasing may post signage accordingly. Item number 2 under H is leasing may ban the possession and carry of firearms on leased premises in the circumstances where state and federal law require it. Number 3, if leasing desires to deviate from the terms of the condition of Section 3H, which request shall be present in writing to the lesser with no less than 30 days notice prior to the next available public meeting or lesser, lesser may, may by motion authorize temporary deviation as deemed appropriate under the circumstances without the need of amended agreement. That's all getting removed from the agreement. So I just wanted to make sure that was clarified and from my understanding, Mr. Laster, the motion, the reason why that is because it's already stated in the agreement earlier in the contract.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Yes, I believe it is summarized earlier in the contract. It was just not adhered to and the public will have to continuously be on their guard anytime they go somewhere to make sure and keep the county accountable to that. But I don't think adding all the extra language in there was the appropriate thing as well because then it's saying that the contract in and of itself didn't have a good wording. I think it has a good wording, it was just misinterpreted.
Chair.
Okay, Mr. Hancock.
So another thing is leasing may restrict patrons from bringing firearms into locations which is prohibited entry by person under age 21 due to their primary source of income being the sale of alcoholic beverages. I think the language could have been different if the desire, if the leasing desires a deviation from the terms and conditions of Section 3H, each request shall be presented in writing to the lesser with no less than 30 days. To me, you could go back to what you were before if you put it in writing. So to me, number 3 just says, okay, now I can write something different like no guns or maybe we'll just do metal detectors when? If they give us in writing 30 days, then who's going to keep track of that except for maybe a couple of us? So no offense, but I don't keep track of everything that's happening at the fairgrounds or everything in Pennington County all the time. And if that gets through, unless we're going to vote on it, which supposedly we are, if it comes with a change, why put us through this again? So I don't like the wording on one and three because, come on now, I've been in government 16 years. So when we change stuff and we put subsections or we put may ban possession, carry of firearms, at least in those circumstances where state or federal law, the word may, someone had said this before, and I know the word, may, not shall. So those three tell me that changes could be made on these premises and we'll go back to where we were before. So that might not be the intent of this board this year, but I think when you put may and you put deviation in there, that scares me when you write up a contract that we think is final and trustworthy. Thank you.
Okay, as we, as I said earlier, we do have that motion on the floor. I've read it into record for you folks. So I have approximately 13 speakers so you know what's on there. So we did implement the three minute. First one on my list, I won't call for a vote until after everybody, everybody's spoken or so forth.
Thank you very much, Commissioner LaCroy. So I'm a security professional here in town and I just had a couple of questions as far as implementation of security as well as the firearms ban or restriction goes on the fairgrounds. I know I only have three minutes to speak, but I'd like to mainly turn this over to you guys as far as what would make you feel safe and what are you looking for as far as the restriction or ban of firearms?
Normally, speaker request forms are for you to speak your piece, not a back and forth.
On my end then, I would recommend using hand metal detectors as opposed to standing if that's something that you do use and decide to implement. They're far more effective, better at finding concealed weapons, and less likely to deal with malfunctions that could open up a whole lot of risks and liabilities for not only the taxpayers, but the counties and the members of the fairground board as well as the attendants. Outside of that, I would recommend patrols and somebody walking the fence line. Firearms is something that you want to keep out of the fairgrounds and you want to avoid infringing on people's rights while doing it. The people who are going to try and break those laws are most likely going to find gaps in the coverage. Now, I've personally seen fences at the fairground cut before in order to smuggle things in and out. So if you are going to implement security at the fair to cut down on risks in that area, please make sure that the grounds are being properly patrolled as well as supervised.
Thank you. Thank you, Rockwell, right?
Morning again, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I'm going to keep my comments short, very short. I applaud removing Section 8 entirely. As I stated earlier, I have no objection to putting up signs saying what is and isn't legal. That's fine. I have no objection, taking this out, I don't think would prohibit that either. But I still have concerns, and my concern is no insurance for like the, if you will, amusement rides, et cetera, which made me think of one other thing. I think we need to put a background check into all the workers on amusement rides to determine how many of those are actually convicted felons, especially when it comes to pedophiles, because most children is what use those amusements. So I'm going to ask you to consider that as well as an addition to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is on the contract for Central State's Fair Board.
Good morning, Mr. Commissioner. My name is Colton Morehead. I'm a full-time student here in town, as well as I volunteer with the Young Americans for Liberty, the part of the organization that had sent out the mailers earlier, and I just wanted to come and kind of address some of the things that you had said regarding that mailer specifically with your concerns of an outside organization trying to persuade voters regarding the situation. The Young Americans for Liberty and the American Action Fund is a nationwide organization, much as an organization such as Pheasants Forever is nationwide, but has... much as an organization such as Pheasants Forever is nationwide, but has local chapters. As far as that goes, we have two chapters here within the Rapid City community. We have one chapter on the South Dakota School of Mines campus, along with a community chapter here that has been involved with politics in the Rapid City community, Pennington County, and the state for over five years now. And it seems very disingenuous to go out, make public press releases, trying to say that there's an outside entity trying to change what's going on within the community when in reality, this is community members expressing concern to neighbors and to the rest of the community over issues that are of local politics that they are concerned about. So I just want you to be more aware with future statements that you make as far as being sure that you're properly representing who you're talking about and have the proper research into that. I know that it does have the Texas return address. I mean, as many corporations do, they're based out of Texas because they have good tax laws and other corporate, corporate laws. I know South Dakota does as well, but let's be honest, we just don't have as much of weather. So.
And the address being Chase Bank.
Yes, and like many corporations and that, you have your outward facing address be at a bank or lawyer's office just because you don't have a single individual who's in charge of the entire corporation. You're a group, so you put that up where your business is registered, where you have your mail returned to. So that is all that I had to say. I just wanted to address that to the board.
Mr. Duss.
I would suggest then in the future that you add your local contact information on it so that you can be contacted because through this, you cannot contact an individual in Austin, Texas relative to it.
Yes, and I believe I'd have to check through what the contact is, but any of those contacts would be able to push you this way, but I will talk with the.
What's the way of getting a hold of anybody?
I will talk with anyone to see as far as that in the future. We'll see. So, thank you.
Chair.
Chair.
Ms. Erica.
Also believe that you should also look at your information and look up a little bit harder if you're telling people it's a scam when it's a School of Mines person or anybody when they're putting something out because it becomes political. As I said, so you made a political statement, Gary.
It was a scam.
It was a scam? So he has an organization that he just told you was real and he believed in not banning guns and you think it's a scam?
Well, this is indicating that this discussion was on a ban on guns. There's not been a discussion.
And Lloyd La Croix has already filed his petition, so you're bringing up a flyer that has been.
Okay. We're back on public.
That is a code of conduct, using your position, having the staff.
Okay, time to move on.
Don't tell the truth. We're here to worry about whatever you guys want to say, nobody else. I learned that.
Thank you.
Tom Blaine.
Thank you, commissioners, for hearing me. Tina Malali from Rapid Valley, representing myself right now. I applaud you for removing section H, H1, 2, and 3. However, I have some concerns about the rest of the contract on conditions. Number one, the Leasie shall on the leased premises operate an annual fair. You're removing the whole thing why a county fair is existing, but the promotion of agriculture, horticulture, mining, and raising stock raising, contests, entertainment, and a carnival midway. Everything that makes a county fair, a county fair, is for everyone in the county to be able to come in and show their wares. You're eliminating that. And I, that was under conditions, number one. Under conditions, let me see, no, it's not under conditions. One, two, three. Under maintenance, repair, and capital expense D, I have a question about, you're removing the income derived from the subleasing of any and all of the leased premises shall be used by Leasie to maintain and repair the premises. Leasie shall be entitled to a 10% administration fee on all subleasing income which may be used in Leasie's operation expenses. Where is that money now going? I have questions about that. I'd like to follow the money and I would like to request an audit on where the money from the Central States Fair and how that is brought in, how much is brought in, how it's spent, and where it's spent. Because I think the fact that you, one, are removing everything that makes a county fair a county fair and then not allowing us to know where the money goes is difficult. But I do applaud you for removing section eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tina. Scott McGilly.
Thank you very much for letting me speak here for just a second. And Scott McGilly, lived here in Rapid City since 1974. And I will want to start with the fair board. I've been here since 1974 in college and I've been to almost every one of the rodeos or the fairs since that period of time. One of the big achievements is when they came in with the one pass for 25 bucks a long time ago. Gerald Dewey come up with that out of Pueblo, Colorado. So there's a little history in there that's really, really been well. And I would like to say that that fair board, I have served on the rodeo committee when we took it over from Suttons a long time ago in 1997 or 98. It, you know, it turned that whole program into a much better production and it's been very successful. And I want to tell you that being on that fair board, on that committee is not easy and especially the fair board. And I also want to take Ron Jeffries for a minute. I don't know if there's another individual in the state of South Dakota with his, with his resources and what he has to do with that board that's had as much success as he has. It's quite amazing. I find that he, I am 100% fan of him all the way up to understand him and the attorney are promoting this, this ban on guns on, on the fairgrounds. And it goes completely against our constitution. So I really applaud you the same for removing section H. I don't think that, that's the only thing I think of that he's ever done that's really, that's off base at all. Because he covers an amazing amount of territory. It's amazing. And working with him, I mean, I have some firsthand experience on him, but he is out of his mind on this one. It's not correct. And it's really interesting. The last part I will say here is that we don't want to have firearms on the fairgrounds? Why not? I would say everybody carry. You ought to see what happens when they, you bring that up. Heads go down, you go, you're out of your mind, McGilly. Well, it is constitutional and we are sanctuary state for that stuff, so why would we not do that? Tina, on the money, you know what straightened up the money is when Jeffries came to town and got on that board. The money straightened up because I was there before and it wasn't straight at all. Wasn't at all close. So, you know, I want to go in. I think that if they applied that thought process on how they do things with this particular deal on section H to their own business, their own community, their own person, their own outside businesses, they would vote against it. They'd do the same thing you do, remove section H. And then Tina can follow up with the money. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thanks, Scott.
Joe.
So how I'll work this, when you, so you guys know, when I, when you get to that 30-second mark, I'll go like that, just so you know. You did fine. Next up is Victor.
Jangula.
Jangula, yeah. I want to get through all the speaker requests, who put in the speaker request. Oh, he's here. I thought he wasn't here.
Mr. Chair, while he's walking up here, I just have a quick question. Is it possible to have the fair, if they're still here, to maybe address those two? Because we talked about those two paragraphs. It might be wise to have them come up if they're willing.
Who's that?
Dealing with item maintenance and repair, the D, and the conditions, item number one, because remember there's some conversation about that. And since it was addressed here, that wasn't something that has been in our main conversation.
I'm trying to get through, I got 13 speaker requests. We had a discussion at the beginning. I think we can address that afterwards.
Okay.
This is going to be pretty time consuming. Sorry, Victor, I didn't know. I thought you weren't here, that's why.
Our forefathers made up this constitution under God. Let's live by the constitution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Victor. Next, we have Loretta.
Morning, commissioners, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Deb and Mr. Travis, for listening to the patriots here. Thank you very much. Our founding fathers didn't take their responsibility lightly when they wrote up this constitution. The reason they wrote it up is because they were looking for freedom of expression and for the opportunity to defend themselves, which they did not have in England when they came over here. So they took great care in making sure that we were protected and that we had rights. And that is why our constitution is of the people, by the people, and for the people. It's not that difficult to understand. And you start taking the weapons and the defense away from our common citizens, you think you've got problems now? You just wait. Look at Australia and look at our big cities. They can have, our blue cities, they can have a gun and the illegals are trampling all over. They're beating up the policemen, the rings and cane. I mean, and you think we're immune from that? You just give it six to 12 months. We've already seen what's going on here. We have about one murder every week. And I grant you, it's not the citizens, the gun-carrying citizens that are doing it. It's the criminals. So I just thank you for your time and I just ask you to please think about the people and what you really want this city to become. Thank you very much.
And your last name is?
Loretta Jangula.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I got Linda. But, Loretta? Oh, okay, who's next? Linda Hayward.
Hi, my name is Linda Hayward. I want to yield my thoughts about this to Tina Malali. I agree with her 100% and I do thank you for taking that off.
Thank you, Linda. Jim Hayward.
Jim Hayward, live out in Rapid Valley. I would just like Commissioner Drews and La Croix and Ross Connect to strongly consider what Deb Hadcock and Travis Lassiter has had to say about this and strongly heed that and take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Ernest Geddy.
Hello, my name's Ernest Geddy. I've lived in Rapid Valley for 50 years. I belong to numerous gun organizations, both locally and nationally. I support the right to keep and bear arms. I support Commissioner Lassiter and Hadcock in particular for their ideas in supporting removal of these sections. Commissioner Drews, I know you're concerned. You mentioned maybe having prominent political figures at the fairgrounds. I've been to some national NRA conventions. One that really sticks out in my mind was in Indianapolis a few years ago. President Trump and a lot of other national and local representatives were there. It was held at the Indianapolis Convention Center, literally right across the street was the Colts Football Stadium where President Trump spoke on Saturday evening. There were 80,000 gun owners that attended that conference over a three-day weekend and to my knowledge, no one was injured. There were 20-some-odd metal detectors set up at the football stadium to remove guns from any NRA members or other members of the public that wanted to listen to Donald Trump. All those guns were sequestered in semi-trailers and whatnot. No one was injured inside that football stadium either. I've been to the fairgrounds numerous times with gun shows and no one has been injured there. Lots and lots and lots of firearms on that property. I commend our police department for all they do. I commend Ron Jeffries. But I'm here to ask you to have the Leasie, the fair board, and Mr. Jeffries to go by your opinions of the right to carry on that property if we see fit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernest. Next, we have Jay Schmidt.
Commissioners, I just want to thank you for taking H out. I appreciate it. And I want to bring up one other thing. Commissioner Drews, not everything's a scam. If you don't like something, that's fine, you don't have to like it. But if it goes against what you're thinking, you can't just push it to the side and call it a scam. That young man was up here representing himself and his group. Just because you didn't like how that flyer was sent out, too bad. But to call him a scam and belittle him, I think that's uncalled for for your position up there.
But it's untrue.
Well, you know, he who doesn't learn from mistakes are going to repeat them. And I remember when you were mayor in Pierre, you did a horrible job.
Okay, let's not go back and forth and that's inappropriate, going back and forth. So if you got something more productive to say?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. We're not going to get into name-calling and character fascinations. Mike Mueller.
But they're not.
Thank you once again, Commissioner, Chairman, and Commissioners. As we sit here in our wonderful, almost 250-year-old representative republic, each of you represent 20-some-thousand constituents and you have a heavy vote every time you vote, and I hope you take it seriously to where those folks that are in the room right now are your constituents and may cross every one of your districts at some point. And I've only heard support. Thank you for the amendment. It looked like I got nods or I got a feeling that this is a positive thing and this will alter this to the positive for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next, we have John James.
I'm John, excuse me, John James, Rapid City. In the interest of brevity, I'll just concur with a lot of the folks that came up and they had a lot of good points, so thank you.
Thanks, John. William Clayton.
Good morning, commissioners. Thanks for hearing me. Number one, I'd like to thank you for your consideration on removing section H. I think that's a worthy suggestion. But I'd like to remind you of several things. By your own admission this morning, the effort to remove firearms from the fairgrounds was not 100% successful. Part of that is based on not having 100% coverage and people able to secret things through the fence. And when you are not 100% successful, typically the people who are penalized are the law-abiding citizens, not the, those who would choose to break the law. Number two, I'll remind you that history tells us that active shooter events happen typically almost 100% of the time in gun-free zones, which is what you have tried to create here. And I'll remind you lastly, that when you took your position on this board, you took a solemn oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of South Dakota. And when in fact you attempt to enact or are successful in enacting something that violates the Constitution of the state of South Dakota, you have completely abandoned that oath. And more importantly, that oath ends with, "So help me God." That is a covenant between you and God Almighty. And when you choose by your own free will to ignore that solemn oath, you are committing blasphemy, the one unforgivable sin. Keep that in mind, please. Thank you.
Thanks, Clayton. If it takes us through our speaker request forms unless Tom Blaine's out there. Okay. Okay, Phil Johnson.
Mr. Chair.
That takes us through our, Mr. Roskinect.
I did receive an email a couple of days ago that I'll share. And the message was, "Please use a little common sense and ban guns at the fairgrounds. Something bad will eventually happen if you don't have the backbone that responsibly." Well, I just passed it out because this gentleman needs to be heard, just like everybody else here in the day. And, you know, those orange cards that those people calling me up and say, you know, "You're going to ban guns." I don't know what I'm going to do. I told them I got 30 firearms in the house, rifles, pistols, and assault rifles. When I was in high school, I had a rifle in the back of my truck every day. So, I said, "Do you know what my position is?" And they said, "Yes." So, just had to share that.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
I just would like to point out for the public, if someone isn't aware, whenever I take out Section 3H, I already currently believe that the fairgrounds cannot ban guns. So, just even though we took that very specific wording out in 3H, I still don't believe, based on the wording in 3F, that allow, I believe that it does not allow them to ban guns and I think they've heard. So, thank you very much for speaking out to me. A lot of y'all are from my district. And so, thank you very much for giving me your opinions and coming here and letting the full board know your concerns and your issues.
Any further discussion?
Chair.
Ms. Hadcock.
One of the gentlemen made a really good point and I appreciate that, that we love the fair and the fairgrounds has been around a long time. And I've been on this county board for nine years and I'll keep saying, his bottom line was the same as mine. Because of one incident in one year, I truly believe we're not going to ban guns. You have a creek to walk across. You're going to have to put mob wire fence around that whole thing to secure it. The signage wasn't in disagreement. You could put the signage up in the alcohol places. Mostly what you're worried about, let's be up straight, was the tent. Signage is not going to hurt anybody because that's the law already. Remember, you can open carry and concealed carry, but you can't be drinking and be intoxicated. So, those were the bottom lines there and I understood that. So, again, when government starts changing things because of one incident, we had this with the VHRs. They started multi-changing different areas because some people liked it, some people didn't. But the bottom line was, government isn't here to regulate to a certain point and start adding stuff to contracts and start changing things when we are here to govern. We're not here to multi, basically. Okay, I can't say it. So, bottom line is, if you, I keep saying that, want to change something, it has to be for all. It's not for a few. And I truly believe that you're not changing it for the good citizens, you're changing it for the bad citizens. I also believe that if you talk, and I work with a lot of veterans, this is dear to their heart. So, to think that may do or instead of shall do, if you want to distinguish by deviation, those words scare the hell out of most people. So, those words on there is why I cannot do this. It has nothing to do with the Fair Board because I've worked with them many years. They do amazing jobs and have, I have done many things at the fairgrounds with them. But I agree with the man. I do not believe and I trust Travis Lassiter. He went to the state to change these laws and he is a veteran. He's not just a citizen, he's a veteran who fought for these rights and I will follow him. I did not and made the mistake the first time because I truly, again, didn't think it was secured anyway and nobody was going to really care because people are going to carry their guns, are going to walk across the creek, the whole half was going to be, people are going to have guns. We're talking ag with trucks and trailers and everything. So, I made a mistake and I won't do it again and I'll trust my friend Travis and I'll trust my veterans and the people that believe in the constitutional rights. That's why I voted for this.
My, well, folks, Mike, I'm going to, this is, the Fair Board are made up of volunteer board members from all over the community and they do their best to put on the best ag show, everything for Rapid City. They work hard and their best interest is in the heart. As you said, they've had some instances and they've seen some stuff across the state and they've come up with an idea of a way to try and make things more safer. That was the whole purpose of the whole thing. As Ms. Hadcock just said, she voted for it because that's what their intent was, to be safe. It was not to infringe on anybody's rights from, you know. So, with that being said, we have a motion on the floor unless there's one more comment from Mr., anybody else? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, folks. Next, that brings us up to... Item 16, and item 16 is a wage study update and this is just a presentation only, just for information only. So, I'd ask all Commissioners if you have any questions or concerns. This is just information, they're going to try and answer them after this meeting.
Mr. Chair, what do you mean? They're going to try to answer them, like in that individual meetings? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, if you have some questions, but this is just informational today presentation.
Tracking, just want to make sure what you were...
So, with that, I'll recognize Carol.
Have to check my watch, is it good morning or good afternoon? I think it's a good morning yet. So, good morning Commissioners, Carol Bancroft. I am the HR Director for Pennington County, but I am also the project leader for the wage study. So, once we have this up on the projection screen, that as this screen indicates that we are in a new era of compensation, the key factors that are influencing this shift are the post-pandemic and the evolution of growth that's going on in our county that's resulting in an ever-present pressure on the labor markets as well as wages. So, this informational-only presentation is intended to demonstrate to you that you have the best combination of talent, skills, and attitude working on the wage study project. These individuals have been an outstanding group of leaders and employees to collaborate with. I'm pleased to say that this group of individuals' hard work and dedication, it's paying off. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each and every one who has been involved in the wage study for giving of their precious time and skills to drive the success for Pennington County and our employees. Before I turn it over to our presenters, I'll leave you with one thought. Fair pay is just not about numbers. It's about respecting the value and contributions of every county employee. So, with that, I am very honored to present to you and introduce our lead presenters and co-chairs of the Wage Study and Market Analysis Subcommittee. That'd be Joe Miller and Sheriff Brian Mueller.
Good morning, Commissioner, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway.
Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff.
Thank you for allowing us the time this morning to give you an update on our wage presentation and thank you, Carol, for that kind introduction. Up first here is just a little bit of what we will go through here, go through the history, the purpose, benefits of what we're doing, goals, process, and the subcommittees, and then finally, a call to action. We'll start out with the history. There's actually, going back through the entire history, back to 1987, there's been about a total of four different wage studies done in Pennington County that I could find written documentation of. The most recent two is Condry and Gallagher. Condry was started in February of 2015, implemented January of 2016, had an estimated cost of implementation of about $930,000, so close to a million bucks. Our most recent one, Gallagher, was started in September of 2019 with an implementation of January of 2021. Estimated cost of implementation of, was $539,000 or almost a little over half a million dollars. So, the important thing to point out here, the history of this, these were all studied in, you know, the year prior to the implementation or two years prior to the implementation. So, there's some things that we'll get into here after a little bit that'll make a little bit more sense, why I bring that up. Some history, the implementation was delayed and behind. So, what I mean by that is Gallagher was studied in 2019. We gathered all our information from all of our like entities in 2019, but it wasn't implemented until 2021, almost two years later. That being said, we started behind the eight ball, right? There's cost-of-living increases in those other entities, stuff like that. The inflationary factor was not applied. And then with wage studies, when you put those individuals onto the wage study and then you hire new people in, it causes compression issues. Doesn't account for the years of service for our valued employees that we do have here that are still with us. And then it was a one-size-fits-all methodology. Gallagher, Condry, good organizations. You know, the Condry worked well for the county for a number of years, but they shoehorned us into their box, right? So, not everything we do in Pennington County fit inside both Condry and Gallagher. The recent history, with that, the Compensation Committee, you know, with all the things that were going on with Gallagher, the COVID-19, the pandemic, we were seeing issues with our wages and Gallagher just wasn't cutting the mustard. So, with that, the Compensation Committee was reinstated and restructured in September of 2022 by unanimous vote. The wage structure was revised with removing the seven steps to midpoint that Gallagher had implemented. There's a good thought process in the seven steps to midpoint, but just wasn't working for what we needed here in Pennington County. That was done in January of 2023 by unanimous vote. Board of Commissioners, you guys voted unanimously to have the Compensation Committee complete a wage study in February of 2023. With that, I'll hand it over to Brian.
And the next couple of slides here are going to just give you a brief history of about nine years of a timeline because it's easy for us to forget year after year what we did last year, but try to remember back, you know, close to a decade what we've done with pay policy, gets pretty difficult. So, we wanted to put a good reminder in here for everybody as to the history. I won't read all of these to you, but it started off in 2016 with the Condry Wage Study Implementation. And go ahead and click to the next slide. And then the second slide runs through current year, 2024, just to give a history of wages that our employees have received. And the next slide just shows the inflation that hit South Dakotans, which you all know, we talk about this very often, but just talking about, you know, if you look back from January of 2021 through October of 2023, inflation hit South Dakotans specifically hard in that it takes close to $12,000 annually to afford the same standard of living in that year-and-a-half time period, which we've seen and it's been a real crunch on us here in Pennington County.
With that, gets us into our census data and our growth, right? Current Pennington County population is 115,000 roughly by the July 2022 census, as you can see here. Current census of approved FTEs, post-time equivalents, 859. By Rushmore Region Report, we're in the top 10 largest employer in the region. Of those are Black Hills Energy, City of Rapid City, Monument Health, and there's several others in that top 10 employers in the region. With that, I talked about, a little bit about retaining valued staff, goes into our, this is just a slide on the cost of what it takes to train a new employee. As you can see, you know, there's some pretty large numbers in there and that's for every employee that we have to rehire if somebody leaves our employment.
The compensation philosophy, and I'm not going to read that entire philosophy to you, you all know it well, you all approved it unanimously, but it's really been our playbook as we work together with elected officials and department heads to come up with a good comprehensive wage program moving forward for us. So, I just want to thank you for giving us this compensation philosophy and supporting it through this process. The purpose of the in-house wage study, and you all were here for the inception of this, so I'm just repeating what you already know, was to create a wage scale and accompanying policies that are both fair and equitable, to create sustainability for the county. It needs to be easily adaptable for every, for the ever-changing labor market, which obviously we've struggled with over the last few years. And then our hope is to minimize the exception requests going in front of the county commission. Although we recognize that we're not going to create a policy or a foundation moving forward that completely eliminates that, we know that it's been very burdensome for you guys this last year, two years, with all the exception requests that our current philosophy requires us to bring in front of you. There's a lot of benefits to the in-house study and I'm just going to briefly talk about a few of them. But for me personally, over 29 years here with Pennington County, I've went through several wage studies and I can tell you, each one has been beneficial in a way, but it's, I felt like each one has been lacking the personalization that we need here for Pennington County with how specific and unique Pennington County is in the region and in the state. The first benefit is really the buy-in. We've really worked hard to make sure all the elected officials and department heads are knowledgeable and part of this process. And that's been pretty refreshing to me. In the past, where there's been frustrations, where we've had similar positions in different departments that looked like they were compensated differently and that causes frustration for line-level staff, for supervisors, for department heads, and then ultimately, sometimes for the commission. We've got to look in every nook and cranny and corner of the county and as we go through this process, I feel like there are differences in similar positions, but we're doing it intentionally, not accidentally, in silos like we've done in the past. We recognize that our employees are our most critical assets and that we can't operate without them. We're trying to create a good, solid foundation and thorough compensation strategy moving forward. We appreciate that you've entrusted us, your leadership team, to work on this process because no one knows the organization like we do. Each time we've brought an outside entity in, we get to spend a couple of weeks with them, they get a snapshot as to what we're like, and then they spend the rest of their time trying to shoehorn Pennington County into a program that makes the most amount of sense before they finish up and leave. That's not what you're getting here with this in-house wage study. All of us are working exceptionally close together. We haven't agreed every step of the way, but we're able to sit down and have good, honest conversations and work through the differences to come to a common understanding and that's been a really amazing benefit, I feel. The customization for all positions that reflect the county operating with the appropriate wage scale and the benefit that we get, we're hoping to get this right now. So, we create this foundation moving forward. So, the majority of the work on this is really behind us, is setting this process up and Joe's going to talk about that in a minute, what the steps we've went through to get to where we are today. But in the future, to be able to refresh this, we have to do just a real small portion on the back end of this to get you new data. We don't have to recreate this wheel two or three years from now when we feel like we're missing the mark. So, it's going to give us really good flexibility and a solid foundation into the future.
So, with that, we set out with some goals, right? When you guys allowed us and entrusted us with this process back in February of last year, so we've been at this over a year, right? We wanted to create a fair, flexible, sustainable pay structure for the county and the taxpayers, right? Nobody knows that we have finite dollars to deal with, better than your leadership team. You know, in 2020, you entrusted us to, or asked us to cut 10% out of our budgets and we did just that. So, we know we have a finite amount of money to deal with. The ability to adapt and change with the labor market as we see it coming. Create a wage philosophy and a wage scale that is fully and easily understood by all employees. I think all your department heads and the leadership team can sit down with any employee and they can explain to them why they are where they're at on the payment or the wage scale. With Gallagher and Condry, I don't think there was anybody that could do that, other than maybe Condry and Gallagher. Identify and utilize the appropriate and applicable data comparisons. We picked the data or we picked the comparable entities, the other counties. counties, you know, looking back through history, Condry, Gallagher, even back to 2000, there was always the same 10 to 12 different entities that we compared ourselves to. Conduct a comprehensive review of each position description and standardize. The department heads, the leadership team, HR, we're all involved in this. We have a good, solid foundation with position descriptions that we've created now. Create a collaborative and transparent process. I would encourage, you know, I think we've got good buy-in from all of the leadership team, and if there's not, come forward. Now's the time to speak. We're creating this. Create a customized wage scale for Pennington County. Retain qualified and skilled employees and be able to recruit. And then last and foremost, create a solid foundation for our current and our future staff. So to do this process with the help of Carol and her experience doing wage studies and her her past experiences, she set out when when in February, we're using a project management strategy, much to like we would use in in a construction project, is kind of what I equvaled it to. We set out, we created these subgroups, which Brian and I are are part of, and we'll get into that here in a little bit, too, is the the people that are involved in those subcommittees. We reviewed the position descriptions and completed that in October of 2023, created a scoring matrix that was gone to the the compensation committee that was completed, the scoring of all the positions in the county in 2024. Right now, we're on to the market analysis for all the positions. We've received data, you know, and we're trying to sift through that, and it's ongoing. The next steps will be the the budget and implementation process going forward. With that, our wage study project leads, Carol Branchoff is our our HR Director and Project Lead, with Cindy Moller, our Finance Lead. We've gone through our market analysis wage scale stuff. I'm the Chair of the the Market Analysis and Wage Scale. Brian and I co-chair that one. With that being said, I would like to invite Annette Brandt from our Benefits Committee to come up and say a little bit about what her and her team has done.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Benefit Committee that I chair is represented by five to six departments. Members are myself, Barry Tice, Nikki Farrar, and Shannon Hawker, and sometimes Brittany Molitor, if the subject is also health-related. It's the task of the Benefit Committee to brainstorm off ideas presented in the Compensation Committee of ways that we can engage staff and provide a positive environment outside of wage compensation for our employees with little to no cost to the taxpayers of Pennington County. In addition, a survey was sent out to the employees in May of 2023 to get some of their suggestions as well of what they would like to see. Those all came from current employees. We helped investigate HSA and FSA tax savings for our employees, both of which are cost-neutral to the county with the exception of implementation, and both were implemented in 2024. FSA, which is for childcare, proves to be a bit cumbersome to use and not well-received, so it will be revisited in 2025 by the Compensation Committee. We have pursued the City of Rapid City with a request to extend their employee discounts to county employees for access to the parks and recreation, city pools and golf courses, but were unsuccessful as the city refused. This would have been no cost to the county and advantageous to both the employees and the city for more utilization and revenue to run their facilities. We looked into apps that we could extend to the employees for challenges to promote good health, but this proved to be a costly measure for the size of our staff. The 2023 Health Benefit Fair presented information on apps already available to our staff for free or at a discount if they are on our healthcare plan. A benefit already available without additional cost to the taxpayers just needed to be communicated better to our current staff. We requested and lined up SDRS, our Retirement Plan Representatives, to come and personally speak with employees about their individual retirement accounts, providing hands-on assistance for help with navigating through accounts online so that they could better manage their future plans. This is a benefit that has already been provided to them, but needed to be communicated better. We researched the possibility of childcare assistance through the county and/or share with the city that was tabled due to the cost that the county tax, due to the cost to the county taxpayers. We assisted with PTO research in lieu of vacation and sick leave, separate banks at the request of the portion of the employees, and determined this to be best tabled until after wage discussion in 2025. For retention and recruitment, we identified an area that with a small change in moving a few sick leave hours over to vacation hour accrual, provided our current employees flexible access to their own benefited time, allowed departments the ability to better plan for absences, to reduce or eliminate immediate fill-in with overtime hours, and better appeal to our new recruits. This requested change was unanimously unanimously approved by the Commission in late 2023 for implementation with the first pay period in 2024. Those are just a few of the items that the Benefit Committee has been working on this year. Currently, we're planning, in the planning stages of a cookout for the employees put on by their department heads.
Thank you, Annette. With that, I would like to invite Sandy Sortland from our Communications Team.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sandy Sortland, H.R. Generalist. As a co-chair for the Communication Subcommittee, Nikki Farrar with the Sheriff's Office, also works with me in communicating to our staff. Any changes that have been coming up? We communicated the benefit changes that Annette just outlined with you. We both have access to all of our employees, and we make sure that they get all of the information that they need in relation to this study. Thank you.
And with that, Kevin?
Good morning, Kevin Carley, ESEC Director. I'm the Chair of the Training Subcommittee on the Compensation Committee, and as such, we've organized several training sessions over about the last 11 months or so. The first was Training and Lightcast. You recall Lightcast as a software package that we purchased for our market analysis tool. I worked with our point of contact at Lightcast on to provide training on May 9 in our conference room at the ESEC. And the initial license holders from each department were identified as Carol Bancroft and Sandra Sortland with HR, Connie with County Highway, Stephanie Olson with ESEC, Kate Blumenrader was initially representing the Sheriff's Office, replaced by Nikki Farrar, and Brooke Romeo from the State's Attorney's Office. Then on September 20, we organized a training session here in the Commission chambers for people from each department that were going to be using the matrix that was developed to sign pay grades and then evaluate each job position. On February 8 of 2024, we coordinated a second, or excuse me, an initial Lightcast demo for all the department heads in the department head meetings, so that they could get an understanding for how that software works and how we're going to use that tool to make sure that we're gaining fair market analysis. And then since it's been a while since we've used it on March 6, we hosted a second training session for those people that I just listed, so that we could actually begin the process of using the Lightcast software and applying that for the pay set ideas we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, and Annette and Sandy. As you can see, it's it's been a large lift. A lot of time has been spent by your department heads and and others putting this thing together. With that.
He skipped my last slide, which was budget, so, which is the easy part of all this, right? When it comes down to the budget. So that's what's on our last slide. We have we have a few asks of you. And with a team like this, you can't go wrong. I mean, I am super excited to bring all of you in this week. We covered a couple of Commissioners this morning, I think maybe one this afternoon, and a couple more later this week, and we're going to do a deep dive into this process. And you're going to you're going to see the benefit of bringing Carol Bancroft on to our team this over this last couple of years because the processes we've used through these wage studies in the past, like Joe said earlier, none of us really understood it. So when it come to conflicts or trying to work things out, the other companies wouldn't even give you the details as to how they come up with the wages, right? We had to give them the details and try to make lines up here or there to come out so the compensation would line up like it needed to for us for our structure. But Carol understands the ins and outs, the ups and downs of the back end of this process, and we have access to it, and we can control it, and we can make it line up and work for Pennington County. So I'm super excited for you to spend some time with Carol this week, so she can show you the back end of what we've developed and all of the work that went into where we are today. So a couple of things that we that we'd ask of of you as the Commission is to stay engaged, continue to ask questions, challenge us if you don't understand something or you feel like we're getting something wrong, because we'll work through the details. And we've been doing that to ourselves since we started this process, I promise you. We didn't all walk in on day one and agree with what this was going to look like on the back end, but we put the work, and we've let our staff continue to work on this. They're super dedicated people that understand the ins and outs of this, and I think the product that we're going to have at the back end is really spectacular. When it comes to the 2025 budget dollars available, you guys will work through that process like you always do and tell and tell us what you think is available for the budget dollars, and that's what we're going to work forward. I think I think a lot of the public, when they hear we're doing a wage study, feels like, you know, if we're doing an internal wage study, maybe we're coming up with our own numbers, and it's going to hamstring the public and increase property taxes. Well, all of that's within your control like it is every year with this process. But what we're going to ask is that you understand the process, ask lots of questions, and follow through on strategic implementation. We realize that we're not going to be able to come up with a plan that we are probably likely going to be able to knock off here in one year. We're going to have to be strategic with how we get our employees where they need to be so we can stay competitive and continue to provide the exceptional services we provide here in Pennington County. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. That was the presentation.
Chair.
Exactly.
Thank you for the presentation, and I keep hearing unanimous, and I appreciate that. I was unanimous when it first started, when I was on the compensation, and this sounded like a really good idea. I won't discount it still, but I did go through some of the changes of last year of exceptions, and that was about 110,000, and that was just salaried employees. And those were the same thing you guys are doing, if I'm correct, comparables and market analysis. That was just 100 people that I looked at. And that's just 100. We have 739 employees past that. I was unanimous, but I have at one time. But since then, because of the transparency and the things that we've been doing on the exceptions, that's hard for me to believe that this comparables and the market analysis can be any different. Like I said, I will keep an open mind, and people said I've and kept saying, you voted for June 6. Well, June 6, that's when was the start of it. Then we started doing the exceptions. The exceptions were excessive to me, and I've been in here nine years. So this is not something I take lightly, because I appreciate the staff and employees of Pennington County. I have always played team. But I also like transparency. The taxpayers need to know what that budget is and how much we're spending. And to me, that meant a lot. But it was discounted and discounted and discounted like it didn't mean anything to me.
Point of order.
Or to your taxpayers.
This is a.
I said me.
I said, I said, point of order.
I'm speaking, and you're letting me speak because I need to finish.
Now you need to let me explain why I called point of order.
Go ahead.
Because that's what, this is a presentation. This isn't, they didn't come here to discuss exceptions and everything else and have speeches on wages. This is a presentation that they've taken the time to sit down with everybody. So that's why I called point of order.
Okay, can I finish now?
Let's please stay stay on track.
Well, they need to know my position, and I think that is the truth. And if I can't say the truth, Lloyd.
You have an appointment with him on Thursday.
What's that got to do with why I voted the way I was, and that people have said time and time again, including Commissioners, that I have voted for this, and now all of a sudden I don't care about it? It's not that I don't care about it. This is a huge issue depending on.
They're not asking for an exception for anything. They're explaining how the process went through.
I wanted to know why I changed my mind, because they kept staying unanimous. That is my point, and that should be something I should be able to say. Every time I say something that you disagree with, you have to stop me. No, if you tell the truth, I'm telling the truth.
Point of order. Quit quit throwing accusations.
I think you just like to fight.
No, no.
Just because I say something that is the truth, and I've been straight up with everybody since.
Call a order. Call a order. Let's get back on track.
Yeah. Anyway, I will listen to the goals and the things that you're doing, but since what I've seen, I don't agree.
Well, can I can I respond a little bit?
Yes.
This was going to be a heavy lift. We're in tough times here. And what we're doing is creating transparency. So I don't know how much more transparent we can be with what we're doing with this process going forward. You're going to get to see every single page and ask any questions about anything that you have. We're working through how to make comparable lists, things that we can do that available to the public. We're going to, this is going to create a level of transparency we've never had before.
Brian, that was my point. I'm not to interrupt you, but that was my point moving forward, that I was willing to listen. My point was that in the past, it was not, and it was proven by what I said in executive sessions. In the in the future, I am always a good listener. I am always supportive of the staff, and I will listen. That was what I was going to finish with. But I was interrupted because I can't say why I didn't support some of this stuff on the exceptions, because I don't want it to carry forward on what's happening with this. I didn't believe in what was happening before, but that doesn't mean I don't have an open mind. But thank you, Brian, and I will be listening, and I will go to your meetings. And I do appreciate the compensation and everyone that put in the time and effort to do it. But it's good to tell the truth and say up straight why I did not support a lot of that, and why people were saying I was, and why I didn't. So that's all I was saying. You guys are doing a great job moving forward, and I will listen, and I will do my goals. Because other people, I can't say what I speak and what I think is the truth. I do like the employees. I like what you guys have done. I just don't like some of the transparency that was in the past, and I believe that wasn't. Doesn't mean it's futuristic.
We're trying to move that forward.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ryan.
I just have a simple question. When we have the meeting, I believe mine is this week, right?
Yes.
I'm not looking at my calendar right now. Will you have like Lightcast and some of the programs that y'all utilize, so we can look at that and see what it does? I mean, if I'm going to ask questions, I kind of want to understand.
The Lightcast specifically and and the comparisons we're still working on, that'll be kind of part two. But Carol's going to do a really good job of walking you through the entire back end of the system, all the scoring matrix that we have, how we've compared like positions across the county, just to give you a good, solid foundation. And then there will need to be a follow-up meeting as we pull the comparable data and that type of stuff, which is going to be the next step in the process.
So there'll be a, Mr. Chair, so there'll be an opportunity for us to sit down and kind of look how the system really pulls it out, other than just a printout on it. I mean, kind of walking through how the system works and things.
Yeah, absolutely. And then as we go through this process with this presentation this week, you can continue to give us questions. I mean, it's an interactive process moving forward that we're that, you know, we'll continue to answer those questions and make sure everybody has a comfort level before we bring an actual proposal for a strategic implementation plan together to you at the end of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Roskin.
Brian and Joe, I appreciate you taking the time this morning to go over that process with Commissioner Drews and myself. And I think by doing that, spending an hour, hour and a half with Commissioners, you get a better understanding of the process. You might not see results tomorrow, but I think what we're going to see the results is the retention that you're going to get out of this program as time goes on. So once again, thank you for all your efforts in the putting this together.
Thank you.
And I agree. I think you guys, the interactive and you guys doing the work is not only opened your eyes, but the the brought the groups together to coming up with some good work. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is item number 17, Joe.
I'll stay right here.
Yep.
All right, Commissioners. Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department, again. Item A is. Item A is, I don't know. To piggyback off of Beetal County's bid from True North for corrugated metal pipe, we've done this for several years. All the specs meet our requirements, 2018, 2019, we spent about $25,000. Having purchased any pipe in 2020 or '21, 2022, we purchased a large pipe for a large project, and then 2023, we made some more pipe purchases to restock our stuff or our yards there. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Joe?
I'm agreeable.
Second.
It's been moved to authorize Highway Department to purchase corrugated metal pipe through TruSteel here on South Dakota utilizing the Beetal County South Dakota Bid Award on January 9th, 2024. Moved by Hagcock, second by Laster. Any further discussion? Saying none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the annual bid recommendations. There's like five motions here.
So first we'll go with projects. We let in asphalt concrete overlay. This is for a two-inch overlay with a leveling course on Nemo Road from approximately north, about a half mile west of, or excuse me, east of Norris Peak Road all the way to the county line, or the project that we just finished up on the county line. Bids came in about at 500, the low bid was 505,448.40 from Western Construction. This is about $250,000 under what we had in our budget, so we are recommending approval.
Go to the board, any questions?
Mr. Chair, move to award ASC 2024 Asphalt Concrete Overlay to Western Construction Inc., Rapid City South Dakota, in the amount of 505,448.40.
Second.
Moved by Roskinak, seconded by Laster. Any further questions? Saying none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
None.
I can do the, I can go through mine, and if you want to do the motions at the end, I guess, how do you want to do it?
Please do that. That's what everybody knows, we can write them down.
Asphalt surface crack sealing, we received four bids for this, lowest bid being highway improvements incorporated in the amount of $337,000, $337,194. This is about 137,000 higher than what we estimated, but we do have that in our budget for this year. So the next one is asphalt surface treatment. Two bids were received. We are recommending awarding to Batumus Paving out of Minnesota in the amount of 1.4 million dollars. Last year's bid was 1.2 million dollars, about the same mileage. It's a 28% increase. So over the last three years, we've actually, this has actually almost doubled with the price of asphalt. 2021's bid was 739,000, so supplies and oil prices are getting very expensive. Next was milling and reclaiming. We received two bids on this project. Currently doing seven miles of Rodford Road. We did do that road back in 2022, John? 2022. And then after that, we, SDN came to us wanting to put their fiber line down Rodford Road. Due to the terrain, they're not able to really get it off into the ditch section where we normally, they normally put the utilities, so they were allowed to go into the roadway with the agreement that they would pay for doing the, redoing the space stabilization project, process. While we have the contract, SDN is also, we have an agreement with SDN to take care of all of the, or the, paying for this. There you go. Train left the station on that one. Then pavement marking, we received one bid from Traffic Services Company in the amount of 500,000, 505,990. This amount is over double what we had budgeted this year, so what we are doing, we're asking to reject this bid and allowing our staff time to go out and inspect the 330 miles of asphalt that we have, and try and cut those, cut down on the quantities to cut down on the cost. With that, those, that, all of our projects.
So we're on item number two, B2.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Move to award ASC 2024 Asphalt Surface Crack Ceiling to Highway Improvement Inc., as follows, out to code in the amount of 337,194.40.
Second.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Roskinak. Any further discussion? Saying none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinak.
Move to award AST 2024 Asphalt Surface Treatment to Batumus Paving Inc., Ortonville, Minnesota, in the amount of 1,431,095.60.
Second.
Moved by Roskinak, seconded by Laster. Any discussion? Saying none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Move to award MR 2024 Millings Reclaiming Rodford Road to All States Pavement Recycling and Stabilization Rogers, Minnesota.
Second.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Roskinak to approve item number four. Any discussion? Saying none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinak.
Move to reject PM 2024 Pavement Marking Bid from Traffic Services Company LLC, Blackhawk, South Dakota, due to budgetary constraints.
Moved by Roskinak.
Second.
Seconded by Hagcock. Any discussion? Saying none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now we come up to supplies, and I think you could do the same thing with those.
Yeah, I'm not going to touch on all of our supplies. I'll touch on some of our higher use items. One of those is our asphalt concrete composite. Two years ago, we used that on Diaz Avenue to complete a two-inch overlay on something that was rutted extremely bad. Two years ago was $90 a ton, last year was 108, this year's 111. So we haven't, didn't see quite the increases we did two years ago. Over the two years, it's $21 a ton price difference. Next up is aggregate materials, three-quarter inch base course. Last year it was $10 a ton. This year it's $9.50 a ton, so it actually went down 50 cents a ton. Asphalt maintenance materials, this is another large quantity item that we do every year. Two years ago was $62 a ton, last year was 68.50 a ton, this year is 69.30 a ton. So year-to-year difference of $1.80 a ton, two-year price difference was 7.30 a ton. We use that, our patch crew uses that to fix potholes and roads that are falling apart. So next one, concrete pipe. Last year, an 18-inch concrete was 26.93 per linial foot. This year is 33.77 per linial foot, so quite the difference on the price of concrete this year as well. Difference is $6.84 per linial foot. Cut back in, wow, emulsified asphalt. Two years ago, so this is the oil that we use for chip seal process, I think many of you have seen that. So it's our AE150, our MC70, and our SS18, it's all part of the asphalt chip seal that we do in-house. Two years ago was 632 dollars a ton, last year was 710 dollars a ton, this year is 735 dollars a ton. So two-year price difference is $78 a ton. De-icing sand, another high-use item, not this year, thankfully. Last year was $20 a ton, this year's $24 a ton, difference of $4 a ton. Typically, we buy about 4,000 tons of that a year with 1,000 tons of salt. Probably not going to have to buy that this year, just due to the fact that we've had a pretty mild winter and not had to use a whole lot of materials, so might be an opportunity to save some dollars there. The next, we're asking for an exception on our timber bridge materials. Two years ago, the state legislature put in place, I don't remember what set bill or what bill it was, but a prohibited entity, so we can't buy from a foreign entity or somebody that's affiliated with those. Wheeler Lumber was our sole bidder on that product. They failed to put that document in with their bid, but were able to produce that upon asking for that right of way, so we're asking for an exception and recommending awarding to Wheeler Lumber for that reason, so.
So any questions for Joe on any of those nine items?
Agreeable.
And these are, is there a second?
I would approve all of them, but I don't know, do we have to take them all as individuals?
Well, that's what I was just looking up.
Yes.
Is that a second?
I would second that, yes.
Do you need me to read it in?
We need to read them all in.
I believe so, yes.
Joe, will you read it in, all of it, and then that way we, that's easier?
Let me get to it here. I don't mind reading each one of them if we want to take that as the whole thing, so it's read into the record.
That would have been nice, yeah.
Okay, I'll read it if.
Please do.
Motion six is move to award AS 2024-1 aggregate material as follows. Items number one and three, it's Simon Contractors of South Dakota Inc., Rapid City South Dakota. Items number two, four and five, to Western Construction Inc., Clapperich Pit and Conch Pit.
Knitschke.
Knitschke Pit. Rapid City, South Dakota, based on location. Motion seven is move to award AS 2024-02 Asphalt Concrete Composite to Western Construction Inc., Rapid City, South Dakota, based on simulated project cost. Motion eight is move to award AS 2024-03 Asphalt Maintenance Materials to Simon Contractors of South Dakota Inc., Rapid City, South Dakota. Motion nine, move to award AS 2024-04 Base Stabilization Material to Team Lab Chemical Cork, Bismarck, North Dakota. Motion 10, move to award AS 2024-05 Precast Concrete Pipe Bridge Products to Rinker Materials, Rapid City, South Dakota. Motion 11 to move, or to award AS 2024, AS 2024-06 Cutback and Emulsified Asphalt to Simon Contractors, the South Dakota Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota. Motion 12 to award AS 2024-07 De-icing Sand to Western Construction Inc., Rapid City, South Dakota.
There's a first and second.
Next page, 13.
Oh, there's more. Oh, my goodness, I thought it was done.
Motion 13, move to award AS 2024-10.
Go trams.
Dust ice control solution to Dustbusters Enterprises, Inc., Evanson, Wyoming. And motion 14 to award AS 2024-12 Timber Bridge Materials to Wheeler Whitewood, South Dakota.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve all items, nine of them. Is there anyone that has any questions on any of them? Saying none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. That brings us up to the joint powers agreement.
Was there nine or 13? How many was there?
It was nine, there's just one.
Yeah, they were just numbered different, yeah.
So item C, right?
Yes.
Okay. Item C, so last year in October of 2023, at the local roads conference, our South Dakota Highway Association of Highway Superintendents voted to discontinue the pavement marking under the current, under the state of South Dakota. So prior, all the counties, the state would administer the pavement marking project the last couple of years, and since COVID hit and paint shortages, amongst other things, it just was not working for the majority of the counties. So the Highway Superintendent's Association voted to discontinue that as it currently was, and then the state, so there was a half a million dollars in there for pavement marking. So now what they're going to do is divide that half a million dollars to the 66 counties on pro-rata basis, so we have 330 miles of the, call it 10,000 miles asphalt in the state that the counties have. So our portion of that cut currently is a minimum of $22,000. So there's several counties out there that only have a mile or two of asphalt, so they're not going to do the agreement, so they'll reconfigure. After they get all these agreements back to them, they'll kind of re-divvy up with those that are going to do this joint powers agreement. Again, you just rejected the bid for our pavement marking, but we do plan to rebid that here in the near future after we get a estimated quantities, try and cut down that quantities. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Joe? Saying none, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve the joint powers agreement to provide for the pavement marking of county roads within Pennington County with the South Dakota Department of Transportation.
Second.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Roskinak. Any discussion? Saying none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you guys for your time, and I think you get, I think you need a break now.
Easy.
Items from Emergency Management, another joint power agreement.
Good morning, Commissioner Dustin Willoughby, Pennington County Emergency Manager. Before you, is a joint powers agreement with what it says, South Dakota Department of the Military, that basically means the South Dakota National Guard. So as the backup dispatch facility out on Camp Rapid, we used to share that space as a backup EOC facility. We're together in this building. It works great to be together at the backup facility as well. However, as 911 expanded, they needed all of that space, so we packed up into a trailer and moved off-site. The National Guard was very encouraging that they wanted us back on their space and next to dispatch. So worked with facilities and the National Guard to identify a building adjacent to 911. It's right across the walkway from where 911 is. We've got basically a large closet that all of our equipment will stay in, and then when we need a backup EOC facility, that equipment will come out onto the larger floor. There's a kitchen facility there, bathroom facility. It's actually a perfect solution. We take up a minimal footprint most of the time, and then we can spread out into a great facility when we need a backup EOC co-located with 911. So before you is the joint powers agreement between the county and the National Guard that will allow for that. $50 a month in utilities that will come out of my budget and is very doable for us. So the motion requested is for the chair's signature and commission approval on this joint powers agreement.
Thanks, Dustin. Any questions?
Chairman.
Ms. Hagcock.
Move to approve joint powers agreement with South Dakota Department of Military providing an alternate EOC space in room 103, building 450, on Camp Rapid, for a monthly utility fee of $50.
Thank you.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Laster. Any further discussion? Saying none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you all so much.
Abatements, Mr. Shannon.
Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. Three requests for abatement in front of you. You have the comments and the reason.
Okay, is there any questions for our mummies? If not, Ms. Hagcock.
Move to approve the abatement application for tax year 2023 as follows. Strasburger parcel number 34233, 204218, University of Northwestern St. Paul parcel number 50991, 9,99454. Chris Deadkane parcel 6512, 1,04284.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Laster. Any discussion? Saying none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Shannon.
Thank you.
See you tonight. What do we, items from Human Resources, new position request from Correctional Major Jail. Okay, we'll wait just.
Thank you, Commissioners. Carol Bancroft, HR Director for Pennington County. And I have discussed with and reviewed the request from the sheriff to create a restructure within the jail, and so I'm going to turn it over to him to talk through as far as what exactly that means, and then asking for approval on that.
Thank you, Carol. Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff. Only two or three more times I'll be up here today, and then we'll be done.
Yeah.
That was your out loud voice.
I was just chuckling because normally you're here early in the morning and then you're done.
Right.
So you've been here all day today.
Right, right. We're all hanging in.
We had to keep you here longer today. We missed you.
We're all hanging in here. So you probably haven't heard yet, but Rob Yantus, our jail commander, has announced We're all hanging in here. So you, you probably haven't heard yet, but Rob Yantus, our jail commander, has announced his retirement. He will be leaving us the end of July, which is, I've got, I have an internal posting for that right now. Uh, I plan to hire that position sometime probably in the next thirty days from within the sheriff's office, but we have an opportunity to slightly change the structure. And just a, real quick, if we jump back several years, uh, when Don Holloway built our current jail, he cr- he changed the structure in the jail temporarily to, to create two jail commanders, and he had one do operations in the jail, and then he had one run the jail construction project. And what I'm advocating for is not that exact same model, but I would like to create a higher position than captain to run the operations part of the jail, so that the new jail commander can work on, um, employee retention, which has been a pretty substantial issue for us at the jail, and then also work on collaboration on this jail building project moving forward. So the, the day-to-day operations can really suck you in, um, and not let you focus on those other administrative things. So this change is not adding an F T E or funding. We'll evaluate our structure moving forward if we need to, if, if we're gonna make any recommendations on any changes going forward. It'll come back in the commission through the twenty twenty-five budget process. But I am asking for creating this major position in the jail today.
Thank you, Ryan. Ms. Haggard.
Thank you, Brian. Full explanation on your paper, um, makes, makes it easier for me to understand in the public what we're doing. Um, I like things being talked about out front. I like the changes and the D B M changes being talked about out front, and this is in full disclosure. Um, this keeps the public in the know about what we talk about. And you've done that in the past over and over again, and I appreciate that. Um, so I'm in support of this. I think the, the jail operations is gonna be growing, and you need a change. And the public needs to know that as well as us, and that's why I say that. Um, I'm not trying to beat anybody up, but the public needs to know these things because what you're doing is positive, and it's a good thing for the jail, and the jail is growing. So, um, thank you for looking ahead. And, and, uh, again, you're gonna have bigger operations, so, um, someone running that operation that is just dealing with, uh, the employees is huge. I know you have H R, but uh, that's a big task for four hundred-some employees. So thank you, Brian.
Any other questions for Brian? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Move to approve new position title of Correctional Major at the D B M L C, five base pay, three thousand four hundred sixty dollars and eighty cents by weekly, and to authorize Human Resources to update the position listing.
Second.
Moved by Lassiter, seconded by Haggard. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have on our agenda, item B with employee concealed carry policy change one point seven.
Yes, and Walter, our risk manager, has been working very closely with our state's attorney office as well as the sheriff's office to devise this policy recommendation. So I'll turn it over to him to explain it.
Oh, good afternoon, Commissioners. Walter McDuff, Pennington County Risk Manager. Uh, what I brought before you guys is a policy change for, for employees to conceal carry throughout the county. Um, basically, one point seven, as you mentioned, Chair, is it limited to our law enforcement, um, which then allow our employees to conceal carry based off of the Constitution now. So with that being said, we, we, we want to change one point seven to read as such that is in front of you guys, as well as implement two point sixteen, which allows our, our employees to conceal carry. Uh, worked with, uh, sheriff and, um, state's attorney's office, uh, to be able to come up with the best policy that we can. Uh, that, I put that in front of you, and I stand for any questions.
Chair.
Walter, I want to make sure to tell you that you, I think you've done a good job on this. I, it, if you look at this, that, all the people you had to bring in, and all the talks and legal parts of it, it took quite a while to get all that and put it together, and I think you did a good job.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Haggard.
Well, you heard a bunch of discussion today. That would have convinced you of anything. So, about concealed carrying and, and protecting our employees or just people in general. So I commend you on this. I know Travis is, is dear and dear to his heart as well. I don't know if he's been involved with this, but he kept saying he was gonna move forward with this as well. So I'm glad you did, Walter, and you're protecting our employees and constitutional rights this way, and, and also thank you for your service. You're also a veteran, so appreciate that, sir.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Laster.
Mr. Chair. And this might just be format and structure, so I've just got one question. I understood it when I read it, I think. But on page two, where it's got, uh, one point seven, you've kind of got highlighted in red, and then we're, we're taking out the old and adding the revised to state? It's just not what I'm used to seeing whenever you add stuff like we do in other ways. I'm just asking.
I understand, Commissioners. No, basically what we're gonna do is the reason I put that in there like that is we're gonna add, um, where you, we're at the end of that red section you're talking about, where it says, see also section two point sixteen concealed carry by non-law enforcement employees. Everything above that is already in our policy for one point seven.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make, cause I'm like, wait a minute. I just want to make sure I'm understanding it right.
I would, I would like to add one more thing. Um, I know you guys have what my motion should read, um, in front of you. Um, but I would like to add that we implement this on April twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-four. That gives our department heads and our law enforcement time to be able to, one, let their people know about it, and two, uh, let the sheriff's office, uh, let their, let his law enforcement, his deputies and, and C O's and whatnot, um, train for it.
Thanks, Walter.
Yes.
I'd make the motion to move to approve the concealed carry by non-law enforcement employee policy to revise Pennington County Employee Handbook, section one point seven, sub-bullet eight, to read possession of dangerous unauthorized materials such as explosives or firearms in the workplace unless carrying of a firearm is part of your job duties. Law enforcement, see also section two one six concealed carry by non-law enforcement employees, and add new section to the Pennington County Employee Handbook, section two point one six titled concealed carry by non-law enforcement employees effective April twenty-ninth.
Move approval.
I just did.
That would be a second.
Okay. I thought you were just reading it.
Motion's made, and seconded by Haggard. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Walter.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Items from Building Committee, recommendations for new building names.
Mr. Purstehill, how are you?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Davis Purcell, uh, Buildings and Grounds Director. Um, so what I have before you is just a recommendation from the Building Committee for new building names, uh, specifically for nine hundred Concourse, uh, First Interstate Bank, and then obviously our current admin building would change with the move out to Concourse. Um, so if you want to refer, uh, to the recommended names on the memo, uh, for nine hundred Concourse, we would basically carry over the Pennington County Administration building name. Uh, for this, then this building, our current administration building, would then turn into the Pennington County Justice Center. And, uh, fourteen Saint Joe, which is First Interstate Bank, um, would be the Pennington County Public Defender and Operations Building. So, uh, yeah, I'll listen to any feedback and stand for any questions.
Is there any questions? Cause this is just the first hearing you.
Yep, just a recommendation.
Okay, Ms. Haggard.
So the public safety building isn't part of the justice center?
No, that will remain the public safety building.
And it won't confuse them by putting justice center on there?
I, I don't think so. Um, the reasoning behind that was because the majority of this building will be the state's attorneys, and then also some parts of the sheriff's office will move into here as well, uh, like warrants and other things like that. I don't know the entire list. Um, but, uh, the justice center kind of stuck, um, and obviously these are recommendations, so, uh, any, uh, if you have recommendations, you can certainly submit them or, or let us know.
I don't have any recommendations. I just remember Mike back in the day calling it justice center, but we also were having the city and the county in this building at that time, so I didn't, didn't know if that was still the same, uh, still seemed like the justice center at that time or not, but.
Right, yeah. Public safety, um, is, is, will remain the place where the city and the sheriff share space. Um, there won't be, I do not think there is a lot of that happening in this building.
Okay, and there's a lot of court services, and that's why you're, okay.
Correct.
Okay, I didn't know if we were.
Thank you for reminding me of that. Yes, that's one of them. Yep.
Oh, that's great. I just didn't know if you were having some of the city come and some of the sheriff's office still come over, and it's more for court services and warrants and stuff like that.
Correct, yep, and state's attorneys. Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments? This is recommendations, and we come back at our next meeting. Seeing none, thank you.
Thanks.
Next, this brings us up to items from the public per S D C L dash one, two, five, dash one. Uh, speaker request form is required. Uh, this is a time for the members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the public or commissioners on policies and issues affecting county government and its functions. Action will not be taken during this item on any issue brought forth that are not properly noticed. Speakers under this item will be recorded in the minutes and the names of the area of interest. Geraldine, is there any speaker requests? Seeing none, I'd look for, I'd say a fifteen-minute break till let planning set up, and we'll come back.
So moved.
Moved by Lassiter, seconded by Haggard. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
So we got. Okay, well, coming back from a break, I'd look at for a motion to go into.
Move to go in the Board of Adjustments.
Second.
Moved by Travis, seconded by Haggard. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That brings us up to item number.
Uh, Cody Sac, Environmental Planner. Item A subdivision regulation variance, C O S V twenty-four dash zero, 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 three. It's to waive the requirement to construct the road to ordinance fourteen standards. Uh, the owner and applicant is Sonquist LLC, Rob Hammerquist, and the agent and surveyor is Davis Engineering, Ron Davis. Location of the property is one, three, zero, four, nine, Sonquist Lane. When looking at a variance, we take a two-pronged approach. Uh, for prong number one, whether crafting the variance runs counter to public interest. Uh, it does not appear that granting the variance would be in public interest as ordinance fourteen requires a twenty-four-foot wide road. Uh, however, Sonquist Road is a, is a twenty-foot wide road, uh, that is paved, uh, which would allow two emergency vehicles to pass each other if needed. And then for prong number two, whether a special condition exists to grant a variance, uh, there is no special condition that would prevent the applicant from constructing the road to ordinance fourteen standards. Uh, again, ordinance fourteen calls for a twenty-four-foot wide road. Uh, Sonquist Road is a sixty-six-foot wide, uh, planted right-of-way and consists of a twenty-foot wide paved road. Uh, currently in the subdivision, there are, uh, nine lots, and seven of those have houses on them. Uh, the applicant is in the planning process. Uh, lot A revised, uh, he's combining the six lots that you see on the screen. He's combining those into one lot. And there will be a single-family resident with an on-site water treatment system on the property. Uh, this was ready for an interview. Uh, the highway department is not opposed, um, to this as the existing, as it's an existing county road, and is currently maintained by the highway department, requiring improvements only along those parts that would create inconsistent roadless. Again, the applicant is proposing to consolidate six lots. Uh, again, there's no special condition that exists on the property that would prevent the applicant from instructing the road to ordinance fourteen standards. Uh, so with that, staff is recommending denial of subdivision regulation variance, C O S V twenty-four dash zero, zero, three. Uh, however, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves the request, staff does not recommend any conditions.
Any questions for Cody?
Chairman.
Haggard.
Highway Department is not opposed because the roads, this was in planning, right? Where we had decided even at the planning level that changing it from twenty to fourteen to twenty would be inconsistent. And I, so I understand where the highway department, so I'm not opposed to this at this time.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross Connect.
I'm gonna support this, and the reason why is that the road is twenty-foot wide, and because it's adjacent to Rapid Creek in a flood hazard area, steep slopes on the left and south side, it, uh, there is a hardship there, and that would be why I'm gonna support this. Other, and then the other reason is that, that it does service a very old established area, and and so you're not gonna see any more homes back there just because of the, it, uh, because there's nowhere to expand, so.
That was a motion to approve?
My motion is to approve.
The explanation.
Second.
There was a motion by Ross Connect, seconded by Haggard. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Move to adjourn as the Board of Adjustment and reconvene as the Board of Commission.
Second.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Ross Connect to adjourn from Board of Adjustments. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now we can board consent agenda.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The following three items are on the Pennington County Planning and Zoning Consent Agenda. Item B is road naming for Brian Barber to name four thousand two hundred twenty-five feet of road in a proposed sixty-six-foot wide access in, in utility easement. And the road name would be John Wayne Trail, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the road name John Wayne Trail. Item C is road naming for Brian Barber to name thirteen hundred feet of road and in a proposed sixty-six-foot wide access in utility easement. And the road name would be Clint Eastwood Trail, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the road name of Clint Eastwood Trail. And item D is public hearing of planning development overlay, C U P U twenty-four dash zero, 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 one for Michael Valone, Povalone LLC, to allow a specialty resort in a highway service and agriculture district. Um, after this was advertised, um, on this agenda, um, staff did find out that the Hill City Prevailers did not advertise this item, so this item has to be continued until the first meeting in April.
So moved.
Second.
Is there anybody from the public that would like this removed from consent agenda? No Commissioners? So we'd be approv- I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which would include item D being changed to continue to the next till April, first meeting in April. Any further discussion?
Bless you.
Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next, we come to uncontested hearings. King Jason.
Afternoon, Commissioners. Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. Item D is rezone, C O R Z twenty-four dash zero, 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 four. Rezone from agriculture district to ranchette district. The applicants are Lynn and Jody Jensen. Their agent is Advanced Design, and Janelle's in the audience if you have any questions for her. Location of the property is at the intersection of Rochford Road and Silver Creek Road. Currently, the property is eighty-three point three four acres, zoned agriculture district. It is vacant. Access is off Silver Creek Road and Rochford Road, and there is special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, staff does look at infrastructure and current and future land use within one half-mile. Rochford Road is a sixty-six-foot wide right-of-way, thirty, thirty-three-foot gravel surface. Silver Creek Road is a U S Forest Service road, which is also sixty-six feet wide and fifteen feet of gravel surface. Current zoning within the, within a half-mile, you can see it on the screen on the top. And future land use is on the bottom. See, the request does match the future land use in that area. Request was sent out for an internal review, cutting out, we did have comments about approach permits that will be handled during the building permit process. Uh, this is the portion of properties that are being proposed to be subdivided off under layout plan twenty-four dash zero, zero, three. You can see lot one in green, lot two in blue, and lot three in red. The remaining balance of this property is gonna stay agriculture district. These three lots will be, uh, ranchette moving forward if this request is approved. With that, staff recommends approval of C O R Z twenty-four dash zero, 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 four with the planning commission's concurrence.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Haggard, seconded by Laster.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross Connect.
My only comment is, right now, the exit, or Rochford Road is gravel, but as Joe stated earlier, it, sometime in June or July, it's gonna be chip sealed, so it'll even be a better, uh, all-service road.
Right.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. It's item E. We're on item F. Hard rock mining research update.
Cody Sac, Environmental Planner. Uh, this was heard at the last Board of Commissioners meeting. Uh, it was, it was continued because it was on consent. Um, the Board of Directors requested the Pennington County State's Attorney's Office and the, uh, Pennington County Planning Department to do research on the hard rock mining ordinance. Uh, we believe that research has been completed, uh, so we're looking for the board's direction to move forward with the hard rock mining ordinance.
Thanks, Cody. I, looking at this is a suggestion to the commission, uh, setting a special meeting for it to bring it forward, unless there's any changes. Is there any changes or anything like that, Cody, that you guys, you guys gone through the whole thing?
Uh, yeah, I don't believe that there's any changes that staff has made. I guess the direction we would look for is, is with all the information that's been given to the board, is there anything that the board would wanna see changed before we brought that ordinance back to? I, I'm pretty sure I'd have to go to. I, I'm pretty sure I'd have to go to Planning Commission at this point because it's been so long before we go back to Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners on that ordinance.
I, I'd probably suggest going back to starting the process, going to.
Planning.
Going to plan and get it going. You need a motion?
Mr. Chair. Brittany, if I, uh, read that right, then we're going to try to not reinvent the wheel, but kind of look at what Lawrence County's doing.
So the ordinance that was written, that was brought in front of the Planning Commission previously, um, was very similar to Lawrence County's. Um, the only difference is, is we didn't require a social, socioeconomic impact study. Um, the state does require that, and the, um, applicants do have to submit that to the state. Um, we could ask that we have that submitted to us as part of the process. The only issue is, is that, um, you know, as far as maybe just reviewing it, um, typically those are performed by consultants that, you know, that, that's their area of expertise. Um, so that was the only thing that was really different, um, in ours, is that we didn't specifically require that. However, the state does require it to go in front of Board of Mining and Minerals.
My, you know, from what I read, it's just like the county really has little jurisdiction because it seems to be that we're going to follow the guidelines and recommendations, the state statutes and government reg, or federal regulations, go back to eighteen seventy-seven, whatever. But what, one thing that we do have, uh, control over is the zoning, is.
Is zoning. We do have zoning. We do have erosion sediment control. We do have road improvements, um, things like that.
Setbacks.
Okay.
Setbacks, things like that, so.
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock, are you done, Ron?
Yeah.
I would include that state paper in there just because people want it. It's not going to take us more time. They want to ask you questions, I would just say, you know, we have it in the packet. You'll have to ask the state, but at least it shows that they did it. And that, maybe that would satisfy people that, you know, didn't know that that has to happen through the state.
So the flow chart that Alexa created, the ones that shows all of the different agencies, okay.
That would be good, and just, if it's not added, just add it to it. Brittany, you just, like you said, it doesn't add any issues. It just shows what the state and what has been done for people to understand that.
Okay.
So it sounds like we want, the Commission wants to move it forward to the Planning Commission for their review.
That'd be my motion.
Moved by Hagcock.
Second.
Seconded by Lester. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item G.
Uh, so item G is the annual, uh, MS four stormwater permit. The South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources requires the county every year, uh, to submit this report. Um, just some of the main highlights, we had thirty-three stormwater permits last year, and we had thirty-two the year before, so pretty consistent in the stormwater permits. Uh, there were eleven, or, yeah, eleven violations in twenty twenty-three when it came to, uh, stormwater. Uh, tendencies were corrected. Uh, one is in the process of becoming compliant. Uh, one other big thing that's happened this year, and it just happened recently, we met with the West Dakota Water Board, uh, the city of Rapid City and the Highway Department, uh, to work on doing some drainage studies out in the valley, as that's where the development's going. Um, so hopefully we can get something going in the next year or so on that. Um, other than that, staff recommends approval of the, uh, annual, uh, twenty twenty-three stormwater report.
Any questions for Cody? Look for a motion to approve twenty twenty-three annual MS four stormwater report.
Go move.
Moved by Lester.
Second.
Seconded by Ross Connect, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Items, Mission Manager, no. Recognized, Joan.
Good afternoon Commissioners. Item twenty-four is agenda preparation, personnel report, personnel notices and reports. That was continued from the March fifth meeting. Today, we would request the Board to make a motion to postpone indefinitely this specific item in order to allow the topics to be broken out as individual items and allow for specific discussion on each of them. So the topics would be the consent agenda policy and procedure. Second one, personnel payroll information and reports, and then the third, the executive session policy and procedure. Purpose of doing that is to separate each topic as its own topic because it, it kind of gotten combopulated in our discussion. So the motion today, if you would, would be move to postpone indefinitely the agenda preparation, personnel notice and reports, agenda item continued from the March fifth meeting.
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
My, um, issue is this, um, consent agenda kind of goes with personnel and payroll reports because of procedure. I mean, like I said, it, it makes it so it's not in the minutes. That was basically the bottom line with a lot of this, is not putting in the minutes or, um, on executive session, some of our policy when it doesn't have a name on it, we talked about that. It just has a DBM change like it was today. Um, some of that process and procedure goes hand in hand, so, um, to put it separately, I think you're going to have to bring it with consent agenda if you're putting, if this Board agrees, um, to put personnel and payroll information, a lot of the, um, different entities that have agendas, just put it at first as a consent agenda. That way people can find it, and again, I did it, and I think, I won't speak for Travis, because of transparency, it's not something that is anything hidden. We have it in the minutes. And I don't, here's the issue, um, some of it might be the work to do that. I don't know if it's any more work to put it in the minutes than it is to put it on a consent agenda, so. Um, I think it's just good business for an agenda. I don't think it's, uh, it's something that, um, people would see, and it's already out there. It's just in minutes, so I didn't see a pros, um, a issue with it. So I don't know if it needs to be brought up separately as a consent agenda policy and a personnel payroll information. Um, those kind of, kind of come, like I said, if you're putting consent agenda, um, just kind of come together. So I can visit with Holly. I know she sent, or you told me to write my concerns and stuff, but I like to, uh, voice it as well. I'm writing, it's not so good, and you know my email is typing. Every time I try to type, I think I erase something, and then I have to start again. I am not good at, at being straight with computers, so, um, I'll have to visit with her and see what she's thinking, or let her send something out and then try to type on what she does, so we'll call her. But if you want to postpone indefinitely, just so, um, depends on, you know, I'd like to see some of that moving forward, so. In the future, it could be two years from now, so.
We're not talking two years from now. We're talking a meeting or two.
Okay.
To, just, just to get them vetted out between the Commission Office, yourself, the Auditor's Office with Cindy Moller, and the minutes. Just to make sure that we're all on the same page before we present a policy, to make sure everybody's on the same page. And the idea of putting them separately as three separate items versus one item.
Right.
Is, some of the things we're talking about on the consent agenda would be abatements that are recommended by
Right.
the Equalization Department. Well, that is, doesn't need to be mixed in with executive session conversation, so if we can break them into three separate conversations.
So some of that.
Even though they all go very much hand in hand.
And some of that's good, and I don't have a problem with, um, it being done because it's been being done in the minutes. Like I said, it was the difference between putting it in the personnel. Um, when I started reading other people's, it just made sense. Um, because, I'll keep saying, people were filling out foyer requests, and it was driving me nuts. And when, when I found out later, they could just look at the minutes. Um, no one's doing anything wrong with the minutes. No one's doing anything wrong with the personnel or the payroll. Okay, it just was for transparency. Yeah, people hate that word, but for me, it's so they could figure it out. And maybe, okay, so let's just say figured out instead of, for the public, instead of transparency. It's not that hard. It's just take it out of the minutes, put it there and let everybody see it. And I, I think in that case, you'll get a lot less foyer's because, I'm being straight, I didn't know it was in the minutes. When people were asking me, and then what's really weird is nobody really told them. I don't know if we all did know, no, Travis didn't. I'm going to speak for Travis now. Um, that it was in the minutes for everybody's payroll. And we had a guy come up here and he was saying the same thing, hey, you know, you need to, and then I was like, uh, he's like, you know, that's in your minutes. So people kind of got mad at him, but he didn't know, and I didn't know, so I didn't know to go tell him that, otherwise he probably wouldn't have came up either. I don't know. So that's why, and people are taking it like you're trying to be, you know, they were not transparent, but I don't know what the word is. Uh, be up straight with our payroll, nobody cares. It's in the minutes. It's out there. We shouldn't have to figure out a foyer or go through the staff to the Commissioner, to the auditors to say, hey, go in the minutes.
And as far as the postponed indefinitely, that's more of a Robert's Rule procedural. We need to dispose of the item because it was, it was noticed and then continued to this meeting.
And that's why.
So just, we're not talking two years down the road. We're talking a couple of meetings.
Well, I just wanted it to be on record that it was going to be a couple of meetings and that we were going to work on it and not something that just postponing indefinitely means it's gone.
Yeah.
So thank you, Ms. Joan, for that.
Absolutely.
No, I think that's a good idea because I think, uh, there's some good stuff in there as far as putting stuff on consent agendas, so. Any more questions for Joan on this?
Chair, just one more comment, sorry. Um, because of consent agenda, remember we talked about some of the other things that would make our meetings faster if we didn't have to go through all of that. We have talked about that before, so it wasn't any different, and I think that would be a huge difference for speeding up some of the meetings, that we don't have to vote on it. It's voted in one piece that.
Just like Joe's stuff today.
Yes.
I wish it was good, because that was a lot.
And we used to do that at the city, a lot of that stuff that we are putting on, voting everything, so I appreciate that.
I'd look for a motion to postpone indefinitely the agenda preparation, personal notice and reports agenda item continued from the March fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Go move.
Second.
Okay, moved by Lester, seconded by Hagcock. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next, that brings us up to item twenty-five. Items from Chair, Commission Members, it's time for individual members to bring forth ideas or concerns to the full Board. Official action will not be taken on any items brought forth at this time. Direction may be given to bring items, excuse me, back before the Board for future consideration. No items. Item number twenty-six, meetings and committee reports. Uh, Travis Lester.
All right, Mr. Chair, thank you. Uh, just to give you guys heads up, I've, um, spoken with, um, Fall River County, uh, discussing, I don't know if you all are aware, they're, they voted to do hand counting during the primary election. Um, and y'all know how much I've been involved with that, going to the Secretary of State's office, being part of the hand counting piece of it. Well, I've asked to be a part of their hand counting down there, to go down there and ob, observe it and take some notes, and so I just figured I'd give the Board heads up that I'll be actively down there, assuming that it goes like, like we're planning, to bring back the report of how the hand counting goes on in Fall River County. I'll reserve all my thoughts and concerns until that, until that moment. Uh, Central States Fair Board, I was at the Central States Fair Board. They're basically getting ready for the annual meeting on March twenty-fifth. Uh, so that's coming up here real soon. Out, outside of that, uh, there was nothing really major that we discussed during the Board, um, just some updates and things of that nature. Uh, but nothing, uh, super out of the ordinary at this moment in time. And then I was not at Building Committee because I was, uh, out of town, and I believe Commissioner Ross Connect covered that for me, and then I cover Fire Service Board for him. And so at the Fire Service Board, they're working on their twenty twenty-five budget. Um, there will be, if it hasn't already happened, an alert and warning test, um, over the wireless system. There's going to be sirens and, um, in the communities, there's going to be TV and, and weather radio announcements, so that's coming up here pretty soon. It's tomorrow at one thirty. Thank you, Joan. I was like, how did I not write down when it was going to be? I, I took all these notes and didn't write down the time. I must have got sidetracked. Um, and then in April, let's see. Everything else seemed to be pretty in order or just minor stuff. There's a lot of individuals that weren't there to do their committee meetings, so there was a lot of non-updates, so that was about it for mine.
Okay. I do, Gary did leave his report, so I'll read his report for him. March eighth, twenty twenty-four, Black Hills Association of County Commissioners and Officials. Meeting was in Kadoka with eleven to fourteen counties in attendance. Wendell Yelob of Ogalla Lakota was elected chairman for the year, and Ron Roskin was elected vice chairman, and Holly Hennings was re-elected secretary. Um, Commissioner Lacroix, the Western Interstate Region Director of South Dakota, was able to report that the PIL payment in lieu of taxes was just fully funded for the current year by Congress, and later that day was signed by the President. He said the effort is now, uh, the effort now is to have Congress also fully fund the Secure Rural School Program, which is the SRS. Uh, which that did expire, so they are working on, I'm sad to that, which I believe is based on the PIL standards also. Both these programs are to assist the local governments in providing emergency services, law enforcement, transportation needs where forest land is prevalent and non-taxable. Robin Carlson of South Dakota Department of Revenue provided a presentation on property taxes. Uh, March eleventh, Rapid City Library Board, Barry Lillard reported librarian Terry Davis said budget won't be, uh, presented to the Board until May. That was from Mr. Drews. Mr. Roskin.
Mr. Chair. Uh, I did do a Zoom meeting for the Black Hills National Forest Cooperating Agency meeting. Uh, just basically, we were hoping that, uh, the supervisor could have been on that Zoom call, but he had some other obligations, uh, so that he could done inter, introductions. I think there was twenty-four of us on Zoom. Uh, the next meeting, I think it's going to be, uh, in person and in Zoom, kind of a combination thereof, but I think now that we got a permanent supervisor, we're going to see a little more uh, movement on the Forest Service Revision Plan in the process of doing that. And then the, uh, Travis Commissioner Massacre stepped in for me for the Fire Service Board, and then I was in Hill City at the Mitchell Lake presentation where their Jim Goobles was, uh, you know, giving, explaining the three options, either keep the dam, remove the dam, or, uh, and, uh, under, under the option of removing the dam, then there would be an enhanced fishery. Or, and then leave the dam as is, and, and, uh, so. Yeah, I think the overall consensus is to go ahead and, and take the dam out, get rid of the liability if that thing ever did totally go out and, uh, do the enhanced fishery for roughly two point four, two point eight million. The revi, revitalization of the dam was over just about, just south of thirty-five million dollars, and we all know that the, that thirty-five million dollars is probably a pipe dream, so. Uh, I think they said, uh, they got about ninety days and they'll, and then Jim Goobles will actually make the decision on what charter for them to go to. They're just waiting for public comment at present. And Gary did a real good job covering the, uh, Black Hills Association of County Commissioners meeting, which Gary and I and Lloyd attended. Uh, Building Committee, basically it's an update on the projects. Uh, there again, we did, we talked about the naming of the buildings today. Ollie wanted to get direction on what we want in the Commission Chamber in the nine hundred concourse, uh, for flat screen TVs, and so one option would be where you have four screens for the presentation, and there'd be two sets of those. I think they were, uh, for the, for each set was roughly sixteen thousand. And then she talked about a projector. If you, if you do those four screens and you go up the Deadwood and you look at some of those, uh, like tin, tin wizy or whatever, you get them lines in the, uh, presentation, and when you're doing something where you got a plant up there, it might be a little confusing. So we haven't made the final decision on that, but the least expensive mo, uh, way would be the, do the projector, which, uh, was somebody's recommendation. And, uh, other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Ron. Deb.
Care cane for this advisory board. That is a really good board. Deb Jensen there asking lots of questions. Um, we have a new, um, BMS lady. Her name is Nancy. Um, I'm sorry, Lisa.
lots of questions. We have a new BMS lady. Her name is Nancy. I'm sorry, Lisa. I don't know why I said Nancy. She used to be the nurse there, one of the nurses, very good, very heart-driven for BMS. So we had some updates from Barry on some of the individuals. And we had just really good discussion on what the care campus does. Because of Deb Jensen, there was a lot of conversation about the different entities that are trying to help in Pennington County in this surrounding area. But a lot of times, it'd be a obstacle or end up being an obstacle because they cannot do the same thing that our care campus and our Health and Human Services does for our people. So that was the bottom line for the conversation. Barry is always very good and Sheriff Mueller and Willie, their hearts are really into trying to make a difference for the homeless, but we're trying to give a help up, not a handout. And we already know by now, with the handout, it causes more issues than a handup does to try to make a difference in people's lives. I also didn't go to air quality, ended up going to a luncheon with some of tribal members on some of the stuff that they're working on. So I missed the air quality board I was going to go. But I like going to their meetings and being updated in some of the stuff that's helping or they're doing around the city and then in different areas of the country. So.
What board was that in, Deb?
It's with Mark Van Norman and the five tribes. And he works with them. And so he upstate, updates me and they do on different areas they're working on. The last one was also on some of the policing on the reservations. So they're trying to do some, basically what the cities and the counties do that are restricted at the reservation. So it's going to make a huge difference if they can get that through. And they're working with Mr. LaPointe from Department of Interior on that, or not interior, what do you call it? Bureau of, not Land Management, but.
Indian Affairs?
BIA. Geez, I don't know why that didn't come.
Bureau of Indian Affairs.
Mr. LaPointe is a very good man. Visit with him a lot too on different issues. But Mark represents a lot of them and he does a really good job at doing stuff. So appreciated that.
Thanks. Planning Commission's pretty straightforward. We just went through it. It was a good meeting. Compensation, we had the presentations here. That's what they went over. And Gary did go over the Black Hills Association of County Commissioners, which was good. One of the things I will touch on, as I did on the way back from that meeting, had the conference with the Public Lands Committee meeting from WIR. And, and one of their biggest discussions during that meeting was with the Ford, you know, they're doing a National Forest Land Management Program. And what the National Board is trying to do is trying to get NACO to host them and have all the counties come in and try to get public comment from all of them, which is circumventing the, how they're supposed to do it. Like with Black Hills, our Black Hills, they should be coming to us and doing it that way. With each region, not trying to scope out and have, they were trying to get NACO to appoint ten people to, to that board. And that was a big no from the Public Lands Committee meeting. They, they said that, that they would recommend that they follow the service that they're supposed to. So that was the big discussion on that one. You know, besides, as Gary just said, with the PIL funding being passed and so forth. So with that, I will end my report. Next, we have approval of the vouchers.
Going to abstain?
We have, motion number one is moved to approve a voucher for the Rose Inn LLC for amount of four hundred dollars with Hancock abstaining.
I'll move. Second.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Roskneck. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries with Hancock abstaining. Number two is approval of the remaining vouchers, the amount of two million, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents. Moved by Roskneck.
Second.
Seconded by Laster. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. That brings us up to executive session. We have personnel per CDCL one twenty-five dash two one, and contractual pending litigation per CDCL one twenty-five dash two three. Look for a motion to go into executive session.
Move to go into executive session.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded by Laster.
Mr. Chair, there's also one more for the emergency response or executive session.
Three, is what she's saying. Three issues for executive session.
Oh, yeah. I put down personal issue and contractual pending litigation. That's what I read.
And then the third one says SDCL one dash two, five dash two, six B for emergency response.
Oh. Oh, yes. Okay.
So Chair?
It was Hancock.
Um, I won't be in there. I talked to Audra already about the compensation. So I won't be in there for that one. But two and three, I will be.
Okay. We'll do one and then we'll call you.
Thank you.
All in favor going into executive session indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that's without an emergency one, a juror and copy for. Okay. I'd look for a motion to come on to executive session.
So move.
Moved by Roskneck, seconded by Hancock. Okay, we get two items. I'd make the motion to move to approve the exception for Holly Hennings and grant with eligibility to participate in emergency personal leave.
Second.
Moved by LaCroy, seconded by Hancock. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, you didn't make the vote to put on an executive session.
Sorry.
Move to come out of executive session.
I, I did that, but I just didn't do the vote, right? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And the motion was to, by LaFroy to approve, exception for Holly Hennings for the grant for the eligibility to participate in emergency personal leave policy, and seconded by Hancock. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number two would be moved to approve Audra Castile's annual salary increase to one ten, a hundred and ten thousand effective March thirty-first of twenty twenty-four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Well, I'm going to say I've got a challenge with this one. And not because I don't agree that Castillo, Audria deserves to get pay raise. I think, I really want to see what the, what the next budget is. And that's why this is kind of giving me, when we have these exceptions out of the normal process, it puts, me at least, I feel, it puts me in a precarious position because I feel like she deserves it. But I don't want to do it outside of the realm where we can look at the budget and make an informed decision to know how it's going to impact long term. That, that's the challenge that I have with something like this. Not the same that I disagree with it. So I've been struggling since I started reading this, which way I was going to go on it. Because if I'm going to stay consistent with my other votes, I'm going to have to vote no, because I want to see how these things are going to impact our budget. So that's my struggle in this. Whenever we keep doing all these out of ordinary exceptions and review compensation stuff. And, you know, we talked about it today in that presentation about the wage study. We need to reduce the number of stuff that we're doing outside of the regular process so that we can keep a better check on the budget. I just want to put that out there before I make my vote, as I'm still struggling which way I'm going to go on this.
Okay. Any other comments?
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
Mine is putting a performance policy with a compensation policy. It's hard for me to go in executive session when you put them together when I don't think, I think a performance policy should be separated from a compensation request. So for me, performance, I did have conversation ahead of time, and I do know Audra and her work just from being here this long. It's hard for me to say no as well because we have already moved every department up over a hundred thousand except for Audra. So I have said no on all of them. And for the reason, again, because some of this, the way it's put in executive session as well. So I'm going to have a hard time voting on this as well.
Mark, Mr. Roskneck.
Maybe, maybe this is something we want to continue until we got a full commission. But I can make a substitute motion to that effect.
You know, this is, we kind of held back on this for a long time.
Okay.
And I think Audria's done some great work. And between HR and her, I think they, they matched up. And then I kind of hate to kick it down the road again.
Okay.
If it does fail on a two to two vote or something along those lines, I think we could bring it back.
Yeah. When it's two to two, it means it comes back to the next meeting.
Yeah. So with that, Carolyn, I think we do a roll call vote.
Did I say one more thing? I apologize, Chair. The comparables on there aren't matching with the comparables on the counties or whatever. So most of our, anyhow, county compared to, have been exceptions. So if we're doing comparable market analysis, we haven't been following that very well based on what those numbers are right there. So that's one.
Can I respond?
Just so you know that. Go ahead.
Um, what that was, was they, they did the comparables and then also the years of service. That's all they got up. And they did, compared to what we did with everybody else. So that's how they come up with that one. And it was the experience plus the years of service. So it's not just as you see.
Just, yeah. And I, and I knew that, but I was just, and she's been in her job three and the treasurer was like one. So, but they also, both of those have been assistants for as long as I've been here. So, yeah.
Any further comments?
No. I probably would vote for this because I don't think it should fail based on what we've done with everybody else. And normally I wouldn't do that. But I also know Audra has, has gone above and beyond, not like anybody else hasn't in this. But I won't leave one out at this point because of exceptions that I didn't agree with before. So.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Hancock?
Aye.
Lassiter?
No.
Roskneck?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye. Motion passes three to one. Now I'd look for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Hancock, seconded by Roskneck. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.